May we now all stand for the invocation.
Um, invocation. Lord God, our heavenly Father, we ask you to oversee our meeting today and bless each one's effort to help craft new policies to enable us to confront the health problems our nation is facing today. Let us enhance our work, forge more unities, and widen our perspectives in the service to the people and to you, our Lord. Watch over us today and grant us the knowledge, patience, and prudence that shall enable us to continue living, working, and serving well towards not just a new normal, but a much better normal for the healthcare system in our country. We shall persevere. We shall continue to combine work with prayers to you, Lord God. Amen.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to dispense with the calling of the roll and the reading of the previous, the minutes of the previous meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Congressman Ako.
May I respectfully move that we dispense with the calling of the roll. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair. There's a Julie seconded motion to dispense with the calling of the roll. Um, hearing objection, the motion is carried. Uh, motion to dispense with them, reading of the previous, the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sir Chair.
Yes, Congressman Cruz.
I move to dispense with the, with the reading of the minutes.
There's a.
And I move for the approval.
There's a Jul- Julie seconded motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the adap- and approval of the same. Hearing an objection, the motion is carried. Um, at this point, we would like to recognize the members of the committee who are physically present. Um, Deputy Majority Leader, uh, Honorable Franz Pumarin, Honorable Ed Vicyap, Honorable Wilter Palma, Deputy Majority Leader, um, Honorable Romeo Akop, Honorable Ricardo Cruz Jr., Honorable Alfelito Alfer Bascog, Honorable Romel Rico Angara, uh, Honorable Franz Castro, Honorable, uh, Marggo, and, uh, Honorable Maxa Dalog Jr. And on Zoom, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Vice Chair, Honorable Peter Miguel, Honorable Margarita Ignatia Nograles, Honorable Larni Levine Roque, Honorable Ron Salo, Honorable Evgeny Vincente Imano, Honorable Salvador Prieto, Honorable Christine Alexey Chutor, Honorable Christopher Son Cocoyap, Honorable Paulo Z. Duterte, Honorable Journey Jet Nisai, Honorable Carmelo John Lasatine II, Honorable Keith Maika Attoni Maiktan, Honorable Luz Mercado, Honorable Eric Goyp, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez, Honorable Doris Manikis, Honorable Daphne Lagon, Honorable Maria Rachel Arenas, Honorable Eleanor Bulot Begtang, Honorable Dante S. Garcia, Honorable Jocelyn Tulfo, Honorable Yolojo Rodriguez, Honorable Senior Vice Chair Anthony Rolanda Gómez Jr., Honorable Adrian J. Advincula, um, Honorable Maria Carmen Zamora, uh, Honorable Maria Vanessa Omentado, Honorable Bonifacio Bosita, Honorable Joseph Stephen Carap Spaduano, Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez. Um, and here, uh, physically present, Honorable Dici Tina Pancho. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Steve Solon from Sarangani. I'd like to manifest my presence, sir.
Uh, Honorable Stephen Solon is hereby acknowledged. Thank you very.
Good morning, everyone. Again, I hope you had a wonderful Valentine's Day yesterday. The chair will not, um.
Once again, to our distinguished members of the committee, esteemed guests and resource persons, in the agenda today, we'll be tackling seventeen bills on the comprehensive renal replacement therapy, uh, eighteen bills on free annual medical checkup, and three bills seeking to modernize the Philippine General Hospital. And we will also be tackling, uh, four local bills seeking to establish new hospitals and upgrade the facilities of existing ones in their respective legislative districts. The aforementioned bills are of vital importance to health promotion. It is incumbent upon this honorable committee to deliberate upon the proposed legislations and upon hearing the comments and recommendations of concerned agencies and stakeholders with the end view of enacting significant legislation. So let us now proceed with the, uh, first agenda, the committee deliberation on the provision of a comprehensive renal replacement therapy. The bills mandating the provision of this, uh, comprehensive renal replacement therapy have been approved during the Eighteenth Congress and was subsequently, um, transmitted to the Senate. Unfortunately, the Senate was not able to tackle it. Uh, we have sent, uh, to every members the, the matrix as well as the proposed substitute bill based, based on the Eighteenth Congress Committee Report uh, for your reference. The chair deems it imperative to prioritize this proposed legislation considering the prevalence of chronic kidney disease amongst Filipinos. It is in fact considered as one of the major causes of mortality. According to the National Kidney Transplant Institute, as reported by the Philippine Youth Agency in June 2022, one Filipino develops chronic renal failure every hour, or about hundred twenty Filipinos per one million population every year. Latest estimates show that around two point three million Filipinos have chronic kidney disease. And in 2016, more than thirty-six thousand patients were on dialysis treatment, which reflects a fifteen percent increase in the number of patients in just one year. That was eight years ago, and it is widely believed that the number of patients on dialysis treatment have significantly increased. At this point, we would like to acknowledge the authors of the following House bills mandating the provision of comprehensive renal replacement therapy. Um, we now call on Representative, um, Ed Vicyap, Eric Goyp, uh, Paulo Z. Duterte and Jeffrey Soriano to sponsor House Bill Number five zero five.
Good morning to the Honorable Chairman, um, Siriaco Gato Jr., my dear colleagues, our distinguished guests, and all resource person and attendees of this hearing. Along with my co-authors, Representatives Eric Yap, Paulo Duterte, and Jeffrey Soriano, it is an honor to sponsor House Bill Number five zero five or the Comprehensive Renal Replacement Therapy Act. This bill gained a huge support from the House upon its passage on the third reading in the recent Eighteenth Congress. The non-government organization World Health Rankings estimated that two point three million Filipinos suffer chronic kidney diseases. Further, the National Kidney and Transplant Institute, NKTI, has identified chronic kidney disease stage five, or CKD five, as the seventh leading cause of death in the country, with one hundred twenty per mil- million Filipinos acquiring the said end-stage renal disease in a year. However, considering such alarming numbers, the cost of medical treatment of kidney diseases remain expensive. It is in this regard that this bill seeks to support the provision of a comprehensive renal replacement therapy, services available to all Filipinos who suffered end-stage kidney disease. By including it, it in the coverage of treatment services provided by the Philhealth, in addition, this proposed measure also supports kidney transplant, which is the best treatment option that will provide quality of life for end-stage kidney disease patients. Hence, in view of the foregoing, the approval of this bill is earnestly sought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Congressman Yap. Uh, I understand, uh, House Bill Number five eight three, author Representative Marlene Primisias Agabas and author of House Bill Number seven zero nine, authored by Representative Emigdio Tanhuatco III. I cannot make it today, so may I ask any member of the committee to sponsor in their behalf?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Congressman Ako.
For the Honorable Representative Tanhuatco III, since we're both from Risan, uh, I would like to move that the explanatory note of the Honorable Tanhuatco insofar as House Bill Number seven oh nine is concerned, be considered as his sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Congressman Ako. Uh.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Congressman Palma.
Uh, also, on behalf of Representative Marlene Agabas, uh, since she's not here, I let her explanatory note serve as her sponsorship message. So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, we now call on Representative Maxi Dalog for House Bill Number seven nine six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, considering that there are a lot of, uh, bills to be taken in today's hearing so that we can go to the deliberations. Uh, and then in the interest of time, I move that my explanatory note be entered as my sponsorship speech, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Dalog. Uh, we now call on Honorable Marggo for his sponsorship speech on House Bills nine eight three.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, Magandang umaga po sa aking mga kasama dito sa kongreso and other resource persons. Thank you for including this proposed measure in today's agenda of the committee. It is my honor to sponsor House Bill nine eight three or the Comprehensive Renal Care. The nineteen eighty-seven constitution guarantees an integrated and comprehensive approach to health development that is endeavored in making health services available to the people at an affordable cost. As stated earlier, about two point three million Filipinos suffer from chronic kidney disease. The CKD is the fifth most common cause of death and disability in the country. When CKD reaches an advanced state, end-stage renal disease occurs. Patients with ESRD require renal replacement therapy, which includes dialysis and kidney transplantation. Renal replacement therapy, however, is costly for the average Filipino family. This measure aims to make comprehensive renal replacement therapy services available to Filipinos who suffer from ESRD by including it in the coverage of treatment services provided by Philhealth. It also supports kidney transplantation as the gold standard treatment option that provides the highest quality of life for our patients. Among the key provisions of the bill is the expansion of pilot benefit packages for kidney transplantation or renal replacement therapy and the provision of these, of free dialysis services to indigent patients. The bill likewise mandates all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain a dialysis service facility in their respective hospital. This bill was already approved by the House last Congress and on third and final reading and has in fact reached the Senate, but due to lack of material time, it was not enacted into law. In view of the foregoing, Mr. Chair, I ask this honorable body to earnestly approve this particular measure. Again, thank you very much and good morning to all.
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Marggo. May we now call on, uh, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez for her sponsorship speech on House Bill Number one seven two two. Uh, Congresswoman Ruth Hernandez. Mr. Chair. She's not on board, so may we ask any member of the committee to sponsor in her behalf? Yes, Congressman Ako.
Or, and on behalf of the Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez, may I move that, uh, the, her explanatory note insofar as House Bill Number one seven two two is con- uh, is considered be, is, uh, considered, uh. May I move that, uh, her sponsorship speech, her explanatory note be considered as her sponsorship speech? So move, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Congressman Ako. May we now call on, uh, Honorable Joseph Stephen Paduano for House Bill Number one nine nine one sponsorship.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, dear colleagues and to the members so, uh, to the honorable resource person. Mr. Chairman, for the interest of time, may I respectfully move that my explanatory note of House Bill Number one nine nine one be adopted as my sponsorship remarks? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Paduano. Uh, Congressman, Congressman, uh, Villa Ferte, uh, Puribata and Ciso are not around, so may we ask any member of the committee to sponsor in their behalf their House Bill Number two zero one two.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Congressman Go.
In behalf of Congressman Villa Fuerte, I would like to move that the explanatory note of said measure be adopted as their sponsorship speech. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Marggo. Uh, next is House Bill Number two six three zero. May we now call on Honorable Franz Castro for her sponsorship speech.
Uh, good morning, good morning, Mr. Chair, distinguished colleagues, and our, um, uh, resource persons and guests. Uh, this representation, along with Representative Arlene Brosas of the Gabriela Women's Party and Raoul Daniel Manuel of the Kabataan Party List, um, filed Bill, House Bill Number two six thirty. Uh, Mr. Chair, this is the, um, the third reading version of the Eighteenth Congress um, that, that we, that we, ano, that, that we approved in the Eighteenth Congress. Uh, Mr. Chair, tatlong beses na po itong pumasa, Sixteenth and Seventeenth Congress. Hey, pinail po natin, and that is House Bill two five one, uh, it was consolidated on, in House Bill five nine five six. The special feature of the bill two six three zero is number one, free dialysis treatment to all indigents in all government hospitals. Number two, mandates all government hospitals to have a dialysis service facility with complete health workers, machines, equipment, supplies, and, uh, training of health workers. And number three, expands, expands the Philippine, uh, Philhealth benefits packages for kidney transplant and dialysis, and also periodic assessment to improve, uh, the facility if it is needed. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Franz Castro. Uh, we now move to House Bill Number two seven three eight by Representative J.C. Abalos. Uh, Honorable Abalos, uh, you're now recognized via Zoom. If, uh, Honorable Abalos is not around, uh, any member of the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Congressman Ako.
Uh, on behalf of the Honorable J.C. Abalos, uh, the author of House Bill Number two seven three eight, may I respectfully move that, uh, his explanatory note be adopted as his sponsorship speech? So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Ako. Uh, we now call on Representative Coco Yap for House Bill Number three zero four two. Um, Honorable Yap, you're now recognized. Honorable Yap? He's not around, um.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Marggo.
I, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that the explanatory note of House Bill three zero four two be adopted as the sponsorship speech of, uh, the said author. Uh, I so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Marggo. Uh, we now call on Honorable Jude Asidre for the sponsorship speech on House Bill Number three two three nine.
Mr. Chair. Yes. Chair. On behalf of the. On behalf of the other principal authors, I respectfully request that the explanatory note, uh, of the said bill, we entered into the records as our sponsorship speech for the measure. So I move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asidre. Uh, we now call on Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas for House Bill Number three four nine seven.
Mi- Mr. Um.
Yes, Honorable Franz Pumarin.
In behalf of the, um, main proponent, who is part of the Quezon City, I move that House Bill Number three four nine seven, um, his explanatory note be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Honorable Pumarin. Uh, we now call on Honorable uh, Harris Ongchuan for House Bill Number four one seven one, a sponsorship speech. Uh, anyone from the members? Uh, on behalf of Congressman Ongchuan.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Congressman Ako.
On behalf of the Honorable, uh, Ongchuan, who is the author of House Bill Number four one seven one, may I respectfully move that, uh, his explanatory note be adopted as his sponsorship speech? So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ako. Uh, for House Bill Number four two four eight, we now call on Vice Chair Keith Maika, uh, Maiktan for the sponsorship.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, proceed.
Me, eh, may I be allowed to submit a favor? And may I respectfully ask the committee for the expeditions consideration of the measure along with other similar bills on the matter? Salamat po.
Thank you, Honorable Maiktan. Uh, we now call on Honorable Franz Pumarin for House Bill Number five one four four, uh, sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to, uh, move that the, my explanatory note be adapted as my sponsorship speech. And, um, I would just like to manifest the solid points why this, uh, House Bill is needed to be approved already. Uh, this, um, bill of mine, uh, within five years of effective of this act, establish dialysis service wards in national, regional, and provincial government hospitals. Uh, uh, CKD patients shall be classified as PWD in terms of privilege and benefits for kidney transplant, uh, free screening and lifetime support for maintenance and immunosuppression. And we seek to increase pilot dialysis treatment coverage and follow no balance billing policy. And lastly, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this provides for coordination and synergy among various departments such as DOH, TSDA, DOLE, NKTI, DSW, and LGSLI in, in hopes of establishing a framework to streamline the government's efforts in addressing the end-stage renal disease. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Franz, uh, Pumarin. And last, uh, but not the least, uh, we now call on Honorable Joseph Violago for House Bill Number five eight six two. Uh, if, uh, he's not around, maybe anyone from the members, uh, to sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Marggo.
In behalf of, uh, Congressman Villago, I would like to move that his explanatory note be adopted as his sponsorship speech and at the same time, seek the immediate approval of this House Bill five eight six two, uh, this morning. Thank you, and, uh, I so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Marggo. Uh, before we call on our resource, uh, uh, persons, uh, may we acknowledge, uh, the other members of the committee who are physically present? Uh, Honorable Rodolfo Ordanes and, uh, Honorable, uh, Vice Chair Maria Angela Garcia. Uh, and on Zoom, uh, Honorable Jude Asidre, um, Honorable Stella Luz Kimbo, Honorable Florida Rita Robes, Honorable Mary Mitzi Kahayonui, Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar, Honorable Jefferson Kongun, Honorable Jeffrey Soriano, and Honorable Romeo Kidpeña Junior. And of course, uh, Congressman Honorable Salvador Prieto of the sixth district, Bulakan. Thank you very much. So. We now call on, uh, the, from the Department of Health, Dr. Melissa Sena.
Before, uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Congressman Palma.
Before, uh, Dr. Sena will, will be giving the floor, will be given the floor, may I move that those, uh, House bills that were already approved on third reading during the last Congress, Eighteenth Congress, uh, we, we, uh, will invoke Section forty-eight of our House rules and approve it, uh, on the committee level. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Congressman Ako.
Maybe we should look back at Section forty-eight, especially second paragraph, simply because there are requirements there that should be followed. So move, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Can we, please read, uh.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Section forty-eight has been, uh, used in all the previous Congresses. And I would like to quote, uh, Section forty-eight, second paragraph. "In case of bills or resolutions that are identified as priority measures of the House, which were previously filed in the immediately preceding Congress and have been approved on third reading, the same may be disposed of as a matter already reported upon the approval of majority of the members of this committee present, there being a quorum." So, uh, that's why I was asking Comsec a while ago, if all the seventeen bills filed, uh, in this committee, uh, would be considered as priority measures of the House? That is the first requirement. It should be considered as a priority measure of the House. And I think we were, I think we have a list of priority measures of the House. So if this is not satisfied and it is not a priority measure of House, we cannot invoke Section forty-eight, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, one minute suspension.
Okay. Atsaka ito, hindi naman pare-parehas ang provision ng iba eh. So we have to harmonize the provision. Then we can, yes, and then we can move.
Session is resumed, meeting is resumed. Congressman Palma.
Mr. Chair, I am withdrawing my motion to give way to our resource persons and the person of Dr. Senna for updates because not all provisions are the same. It's different approach. After, after the presentation of Dr. Senna, then I might move for invoking Section 48 again so that it would be fast track to dispose this in the committee level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Congressman Palma. Congressman Akop.
Before we can come up with a substitute bill of all the 17 bills regarding this issue, then it would give time for the Comsec to find out whether this one, this, these bills would be one of the priority bills of the House of Representatives. Mr. Chair.
Duly noted Congressman Akop. So we now proceed with our resource person Congressman, Dr. Melissa Senna. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, good morning distinguished legislators. The Department of Health supports the intent of House Bills seeking to provide for the provision of comprehensive renal replacement therapy for Filipinos, particularly the strengthening of designated kidney transplant center at the national level through the establishment of renal care centers in select hospitals across the regions. Chronic kidney disease is the fourth leading cause of death in the Philippines and we have a growing incidence of end-stage renal disease in the past 15 years and is estimated to continue to increase by 10% each year. However, the DOH expresses reservation on the establishment of dialysis facilities in all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals. We have to consider the need for a proper scale of response to the burden of disease and out of concern of limited financial resources. Small or lower, lower level hospitals might not be able to sustain the operations of a hemodialysis facility. The initial investment is estimated to be at 26 million pesos for capital outlay and 8 million per year for personnel expenses and additional expenses for consumables. We recommend that the establishment of renal care facilities be in accordance with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan 2020 to 2040 and as guided by the Designated National Specialty Center for Renal Care, which is the National Kidney and Transplant Institute. As for the financing mechanism, through the social health insurance, we defer to Phil Health who are present online. In consideration of the foregoing, the DOH poses no objection to the House Bills and their intent, subject to our technical recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Senna. May we hear from the NKTI, Dr. Romina Dangilan.
Good morning Congressman Gato, head of our Committee on Health and all our distinguished legislators this morning. I'm Dr. Romina Dangilan, the Deputy Executive Director for Medical Services from the National Kidney and Transplant Institute. And the NKTI would like to commend all our legislators for the comprehensive RRT bill that provides for all the options for replacing kidney function for Filipinos afflicted with end-stage renal disease, namely kidney transplantation that affords the greatest survival and quality of life, allowing the full rehabilitation of patients. Second, peritoneal dialysis, which affords a higher quality of life and survival among the dialysis options, as well as being the most cost-effective and sustainable type of dialysis for the country and hemodialysis. PD is advantageous being a home-based therapy and does not require a huge capital investment to set up the service. There are no machines for regular treatment, water treatment, dialyzer reprocessing equipment, and numerous personnel composed of dialysis nurses at a ratio of 1:4, HD technicians, admin staff, and utility workers. Director Senna mentioned the huge expense if we are going to set up hemodialysis only. The peritoneal dialysis first policy was adopted by the NKTI since 2004, recognizing the benefits and advantages of PD. And we worked ardently with the Department of Health and Phil Health to develop an improved reimbursement program for lifelong dialysis support to encourage patients to go on this home-based therapy. In 2014, PHIC implemented the PD-Z benefit package where 270,000 pesos a year is provided for PD therapy per year per patient. This was higher at that time than the hemodialysis case rate benefit to encourage patients to go on PD as their lifelong therapy. A Cost Effectiveness Evaluation of Kidney Replacement in the Philippines by the DOH Health Technology Assessment Group as commissioned by Phil Health was published by Bayani et al. in 2021. I provide that paper with you po in your annexes in our folder that we gave to each of you today. She found that after kidney transplantation, PD was the preferred treatment modality since it provided better value for money with an incremental cost-effectiveness ratio of 570,000 zero two nine pesos per quali gained compared to the other modalities. And in fact, expanding the existing hemodialysis coverage to 156 sessions per year was the least cost-effective policy. Moreover, in a recently completed study from NKTI, still unpublished, looking at the burden on caregivers of HD and PD patients using two instruments, family caregivers of PD patients has a significantly better perception of quality of life and caregivers of hemodialysis patients has had a significantly greater burden of care. So all of these studies po show that if the legislators would like to give RRT, number one po is kidney transplant, secondly should be PD, peritoneal dialysis, and thirdly would be hemodialysis, but all modalities as mentioned in the bill are available. Thus, NKTI's position is to continue to give more incentives and benefits for patients who opt for a kidney transplant and peritoneal dialysis by providing a higher benefit package for these two modalities. And we have details po on, on this issue. With regards kidney transplantation, which is also offered as an RRT or form of renal replacement therapy, we also wrote to Phil Health asking for an increase in this benefit. Since its inception of the Z benefit was back in 2012, it's now 10 years later and there's been already an increase in the cost for hospitalization, medications, etc. In addition, we would like to, we have been asking Phil Health to give a separate outpatient benefit for the immunosuppression drugs post-kidney transplant already for the past several years. Since we find that if these drugs are not sustainable by all patients, it's a deterrent for patients to go on kidney transplantation. So if Phil Health will offer the immunosuppression of the patients to prevent graft rejection and graft loss, then it will be a modality that will be better accepted by our patients instead of returning to lifelong dialysis. We strongly recommend that Phil Health will support dialysis for life. Then the cost of immunosuppression should also be provided for life. The number and dose of immunosuppression drugs decrease over time, so this benefit will decrease in amount over time. We recommend po that all three options should be enhanced at the same time and not be increased for one modality before the other modalities. Increasing the benefit for one modality before the others would incentivize this modality compared to the others, which is disadvantageous to the patient. Simultaneously offering all the RRT options with the best benefit package for each would ensure that patients are offered all the modalities with a maximum Phil Health benefits for each so that they can make the right choice. Hopefully, they will choose the modality that gives them the highest survival and the best quality of life. Then Kong Gato, we have some suggestions as we take up the details of the bill. Thank you po sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dangilan. May we now call on the Phil Health? Dr. Albert Domingo from Phil Health, I think he's on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I coming in loud and clear po?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the Chair and the honorable members of the committee and fellow resource persons. I am Dr. Albert Domingo on behalf of the acting DCEO, Emanuela Desma Jr. and colleagues at the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation. We support the measures filed in the House for the increase of our renal replacement therapy in all its modalities as discussed. In particular, we are looking at peritoneal dialysis first as already mentioned by our DOH and NKTI colleagues. The disease we are addressing is chronic kidney disease. Primary healthcare, including less salt intake and early detection of conditions like hypertension and diabetes are still the best cost-effective options. Less hypertension, less diabetes, less chronic kidney disease. We will not even have to determine whether it's hemodialysis or peritoneal dialysis. But in the case where we need to make a choice, both hemodialysis and peritoneal dialysis are effective insofar as clinical implications are concerned. It is really a matter of choice depending on the advantages and disadvantages as already excellently outlined by our DOH and NKTI colleagues. On the part of Phil Health, even on the assumption that benefits would be expanded, we can only take care of the demand side of the equation. The supply side, as discussed by Dr. Senna, needs to catch up with our members, our Filipinos out there who need the services. Even in the presence of comprehensive benefits for both PD and hemodialysis from Phil Health, if there are no centers, especially on the part of hemodialysis, who will, that will be ready to receive our patients nationwide in areas especially where we have isolated areas needing care for, provide care for patients, then we will have problems in the utilization of these benefits and they will not redound to improved health for our Filipino patients. After hearing from NKTI, we do not need to propose anymore of more details on the benefits of peritoneal dialysis. The corporation is actually espousing a peritoneal dialysis first position. And when we say peritoneal dialysis first, we are not of course discounting the need to also provide for hemodialysis. We also need to mention that as it is, the Z benefits for kidney transplantation are already there, 600,000 per year. And we take note of this advocacy by the NKTI for the immunosuppressive drugs afterwards. And we also submit that it is subject to evaluation by the Health Technology Assessment Council, which we are ready to work with together with NKTI for that matter. That is all, Mr. Chair, and we would also like to submit a more detailed position paper at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Domingo. May we now call representative from the DBM, Ms. Nell G. Amande. Ms. Amande.
Good morning, Your Honor. May I refer to our, to our Bureau in Legislative, Legislative Division po, Sir Justin and Ms. Nihal.
Ms. Nihal.
Yes po, considering that they are the one consolidated our position paper for DBM.
Okay, Ms. Nihal, are you on board?
Hello po, Mr. Chair. Hello po, may I request to be recognized, sir.
Please, are you with DBA?
Yes, yes sir. Good morning po, Mr. Chair and the honorable members of the committee. I am Justin Wisner po, from DBM Budget Information Legislative Service po. We are still studying the proposed legislative measures, sir. And further, we will submit our official division, DBM position paper once signed by the secretary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. May we now call on Dr. Rose Licete from the Philippine Society for Transplant Surgeons. Dr. Alicete.
Good morning, good morning Kong.
Yes, Dr. Alicete, proceed.
Yes, I'm sorry, but I am now in India for observational training on liver transplant and I have assigned a representative. However, the one read by Dr. Romina Dangilan has been discussed among us and that indeed we encourage the patients to have transplant. That's why we have been asking Phil Health for more coverage for the transplant, whether it be living donor or cadaveric donor, so that the patient will be incentivized to have transplant. And of course, if possible, a lifelong medication immunosuppression for them. That, saying that, we, we, we say that these dialysis options, whether peritoneal or hemodialysis, should only be a bridge towards transplantation. Thank you very much Congressman Gato.
Thank you, Dr. Alicete. So anyone from the members would like to...
Uh, I'd like just to...
Congressman Angara.
May I be recognized? Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of our colleagues here, Mr. Chair, because the statement earlier of the DBM is worrisome for me. Because on our committee level for, for today's work job is that I assume that health is always a priority for the Filipino people, but... Alam po ninyo, sinabi ni Kong Franz Castro kanina that her bill has passed 16, 17, and 18 Congress. And, and at the end of the day, all the bills that are proposed for today's committee hearing and eventually if it becomes a law, will curtail na kinakailangan may competition lagi ang DBM. At the end of the day, magaganda po 'yung ating mga bills na nakahain ngayong araw nito. But I think if, if it's possible that the DBM can fast-track the data that's needed for us to be able to at least have a chance on our proposed bills for today's agenda. So moving forward, para alam po natin kung ano 'yung san tayong ating katatayuan. Because at the end of the day, that is the most, very, the most important thing that needs to be tackled. It's supported by the NKTI, supported by DOH, but at the end of the day, kinakailangan po natin ang kanapantang pondo dito po sa ating mga bills. So that's all, Mr. Chair. Maraming salamat po.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Angara. Franz Castro and then Honorable Marco. And then Congressman Promarin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So dismayado din po ako sa DBM, ano? Katulad ng feelings, ano pinayag na ating kasamahan Congressman Angara. Dahil ano, na'to nakapasa na nga ito eh. So sana meron na talaga silang, ano, meron na talaga silang position paper and at the same time, 'yung budget. Dahil Mr. Chair, sinabi kanina ni Dr. Senna, they would not agree that all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals would establish itong mga renal, itong, itong parang center for dialysis, Mr. Chair. Ito naman po, nakalagay po naman dito, within five years of its effectiveness. So merong time para, para talagang ma-establish dahil... Tanong ko lang po kay Dr. Senna, Mr. Chair. Ano nga po ba 'yung budget? You have mentioned budget po for establishing a basic dialysis center. Magkano po ba may nabanggit kayo?
Ah, yes ma'am. The initial investment for capital outlay would be 26 million pesos. And then annually for personnel expenses, ito po 'yung pasweldo ng mga tao, is 8 million for the hemodialysis facility alone. And then additionally... And then additional expenses for the consumables, ma'am. Thank you po.
Okay, so, so yun na po, merong, meron na tayong ganong data for, for the establishment. And then, um, amongst national and regional provincial hospitals po, ilan po 'yung may facilities tayo ng ganito? Aside from, ano, kasi, di ba, uh, sinasabi naman, uh, sinasabi naman ni President Marcos Junior na, "We will establish 'yung mga specialty na mga hospital." So, including this, kasi ito 'yung, ano eh, preva, ito 'yung, ito 'yung, Mr. Chair, di ba? According to your statement earlier, dami talaga ng mga Pilipino ang nangangailangan ng dialysis. Kung walang, magkakaroon ng donor ng, for kidney transplant, so, ito pa rin talaga 'yung best para ma-survive ng ating mga kababayan. So, ilan po ba, Mr. Chair, aside from the national kidney, 'yung merong mga ganitong facilities? Para marationalize din natin, Mr. Chair, di ba? So, hindi, kung hindi ngayon, in, in five years, marationalize natin, kung saan tayo pwedeng mag-prioritize ng mga ospital na magpagtatayuan ng mga ganitong center. So, hindi naman, ano'to, ano'to eh, continuing ito eh, di ba? So, mahalaga lang na meron tayong bill na ganito, so that lahat ng mga ospital natin could provide. Kasi ito 'yung pangangailangan ng ating mga, mga, ano, ng mga pasyente, instead of going to private sector na napaka mahal, di ba? So, eto po. Yes, um.
Dr. Casasola, uh, for the question of Honorable Castro.
Yeah, good morning, Honorable Chair and our legislators. Based on our PRDR data dated 2016, the number of dialysis, uh, in the entire Philippines was six, HD dialysis, hemodialysis center was 636, while for PD is only 32. And this is based on the regions po.
So, yan po sa mga public hospitals natin?
All. All po yun.
In, including private?
Yes po.
Okay, so sa mga, sa mga public hospitals po natin, ilan?
Ma'am, uh, based on here, 'yung freestanding natin po ma'am is around, total is 216. For the government hospital owned, it's 42. Government hospital base is 29. For the private hospital owned is 216. And for private hospital base is 133. So, as you can see more on the private hospitals, ang meron po.
So, thank you for the data, Mr. Chair. So, yun na nga'y sinasabi natin, ano, more than 100 na mga hospitals natin in public. Tama pa ba, itama po ba, ilan po ba 'yung public, uh, hospitals natin, more than 100?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, 42 for the hospital, government, that would be 70 po, around 70 lang po.
Yes, so, ayun, Mr. Chair, kung meron na palang mga ganong facility, ma-improve. And then, later on, um, step by step, uh, um, ma-provide natin 'yung lahat ng mga hospitals natin. So, that 'yung mga pasyente, may, may ano sila, 'yung priority nila, 'yung public hospital, kasi libre yun, before they go to the private hospitals.
Mr. Chair? On, uh, Honorable Castro, are these dialysis centers equitably distributed? Or are they concentrated in Metro Manila? Of the 600 hemodialysis centers?
Sir, majority is in N C R po.
So, how many percent are in the?
23%, 23.9%, followed by 4A, that is 20.28%. Then, the next po is Region 3, that is 15.57%. So, nakacategorized naman po dito according to regions po.
So, how many percent are in Metro Manila and Luzon?
23.9.
Eighty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
23.9, sir. Then 4A is 20.28. Then, the third highest is Region 3, that is 15.57, so.
So, how many percent are in Visayas and Mindanao?
Uh, yun, sir, we have to compute pas.
I mean, is it more than 50% are in Luzon?
Yeah, sir. Then Scott.
So, it's not equitably distributed, that's the problem. So, may we now call on?
Yes, Mr. Chair, may I finish my?
Ah, yes, Honorable Castro.
So, tinatim, Mr. Chair, na may tagi bang, tagi bang, so means imbalance. Wala 'yung Visayas and Mindanao, kaya, kaya 'yung ating mga kababayan po from Mindanao and Visayas, pupunta pa 'yan sa N C R to avail. So, kung meron po tayong plano na magkaroon ng ganito sa lahat ng mga, mga hospitals natin, provincial. So, that would be good for our people, ano, 'yung, para 'yung sa health services natin. So, yun lang naman po 'yung purpose ng, ng bill natin. Um, di naman ito agad-agad na magagawa, meron naman pong ipaplano. So, I hope, I hope nakuha po ng, ng Health Department, ano, 'yung rationale. So, hindi naman ito agad-agad, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you po.
Thank you, Honorable Franz. Uh, Honorable Mark Go?
Mr. Oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, I think the issue of appropriation, we can tackle that in the committee on appropriation. Uh, the concept of this program is really to help our people who have problems with their kidneys, no? Uh, the concept is, is acceptable to all, even the Department of Health, Phil Health, and the N K T I, and even the Department of Budget. So, having said that, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we consolidate the 17 bills and come out with a substitute bill using the approved bill on third and final reading during the 18th Congress and given to the Senate as the lead bill and approve the same, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, before we, we act on the motion of Mark Go, uh, may we hear from, uh, Honorable Franz Pumarin?
No, yeah, yeah. Hello, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, being a neophyte congressman, after hearing all the, uh, statements manifestation of my colleagues here, um, I would just like to ask if, do we need to ask for a certificate of, um, you know, availability funds or whatever? Because, uh, what's happening right now, we will, my, my personal opinion, being a neophyte again, kasi, Mr. Chairman, uh, based on the statement, this has been passed, uh, for the last two congresses ata. So, what's happening, papasan natin, I think ang bottom line dito, we don't have enough, uh, budget for dati. So, siguro, um, we can approve this in this committee level, but before we tackle it in the plenary, we have to get some assurance from D B M. Kasi tayo, nagiging mukhang ano eh, um, uh, how do I say it? Papasa tayo, pero it's just pending here again sa, sa House. So, it's just my query, kung, how do we go to the right process? Na hindi naman mag-eend up na parang previous congresses na hindi pumapasah. Because I guess, there's not enough budget and we need a firm commitment from D B M if they can really find the allocation for this, uh, program.
Mr. Chair?
Uh.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, I'll give one minute, I'll yield to, for one minute to Congressman Akop regarding the budgetary concern of Congressman Pumarin.
Uh, Congressman Akop?
The, the, the protocol for the passage of a bill insofar as the House is concerned is, from the committee level, when it is approved by the committee, if there are provisions regarding funds, it would be passed through the Committee on Appropriations where the funding aspect will be discussed. And after which, the Committee on Appropriations, if it approves the bill, it goes to the Committee on Rules. Yun po 'yung proseso. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Honorable Pumarin?
Um, thank you very much, uh, Honorable Akop. Again, question, if you pass here, do we refer this to the Commission of Appropriations? Okay, thank you, committee.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, um.
Mr. Chair?
I think, Honorable, uh.
Yeah. I, I'll yield first, ladies first.
Okay, Honorable, uh, Stella Kimbo?
Yes.
No, no, Mr. Chair, uh.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, the, Honorable Kimbo first and then we'll, we'll go to, uh.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, please proceed, Honorable Kimbo.
Yes, on the question of Kong Franz Pumarin, on, uh, whether, um, a certificate of fund availability is necessary, um, that will only be necessary if the appropriation language indicates a specific amount to be appropriated. Um, otherwise, hindi po kailangan ng certificate ngayon. And, uh, tama naman po si Kong Akop, tadaan naman din naman po sa appropriations for the, for the appropriate, um, language for appropriations. Um, but having said that, uh, Mr. Chair, um, I, well, first of all, I express support for the bill and at the same time, I also express disappointment na merong reservation ng D O H dito po sa paglagay ng, uh, necessary, um, additional dialysis machines. Because alam naman natin na, uh, pwede ngayon problem talaga sa ating mga kababayan or kadistito, 'yung lack of access to dialysis machines. And, pagdating naman po sa fiscal space required, as Kong Franz Castro mentioned, meron naman pong five years na nakaindicate, so hindi naman po ito overnight na talagang pupondohan ang paglagay ng dialysis machine sa lahat po ng public hospitals. Number two, um, 'yung kung sinabi ng Phil Health, um, na, as far as they are concerned, demand side lang ang tinitignan nila. Well, again, I express disappointment. Um, of course, demand side yun because, uh, effectively, Phil Health reduces the out-of-pocket payment of, uh, the patient. However, please keep in mind that the payment, uh, that Phil Health makes is for purposes of, um, uh, making sure that the supply is there. Ibig sabihin, kung ano nakukuha ang payment ng dialysis center, whether that's privately owned or publicly owned, ayun naman po ang gagamitin to either recover your initial capital outlay and at the same time, maintain the facility. So, 'yung, 'yung Phil Health, kasama po kayo sa pag-insure na, um, sufficient ang supply. And again, final note, uh, ang ibig sabihin lang, Chairman Gato, hindi po nag-uusap ng mabuti ang D O H at Phil Health, pagdating sa napaka-importante pagay na ito. Kasi bakit sasabihin ng D O H na walang pondo? Pero sa totoo lang, um, right now, because I believe parang 150 plus dialysis treatments na ang covered ng Phil Health, hindi ba, at the very least, sapat na yun para makapag-maintain ka, or at least, um, defray the cost of the consumables? So, yun lang po, um, yun ang ating, uh, healing. And sana, a quick response from Phil Health and particularly, particularly D O H to commit to having, uh, better dialogue, um, with the Phil Health. Kasi, kayo 'yung financier eh, hindi lang po kayo demand side, um, Phil Health, supply side din kayo in that sense. So, sana po magcommit ang D O H sa pag-usapan, at tuldukan na po itong issue ng pag-finance ng necessary dialysis machines po. Thank you po.
Thank you, Congressman Kimbo. I hope the D O H and the Phil Health, um, are listening. Uh, may we now call on Congressman Vice Chair Garcia, Angela Garcia?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, to everyone, good morning. Kong Palma, happy Valentine's po. Maraming salamat. Um, 'yung gusto ko lang pong i-clarify, 'yung nabanggit po ni Kong Akop kanina, base po sa rules. At 'yung nabanggit po ni, uh, Congresswoman Franz tungkol po sa nabanggit ni Pangulo, doon sa kanyang sona. At, uh, nabanggit po ni Pangulo sa kanyang sona na, um, uh, in response, the Chief Executive vowed to build hospitals in other parts of the Philippines in a bid to bring essential health services closer to the people. Um, we must bring medical services to the people and not wait for them to come to our hospitals and healthcare centers. So, eto po bang, uh, um, statement ni Pangulo, doon sa kanyang sona, can be considered already as a priority measure ng House? At kung gayon po, uh, sinisikunduhan ko po 'yung pending motion ni Congressman Mark Go na i-consolidate lahat po ng bills na mag-conform doon po sa, uh, previously passed bill during the 18th and previous congresses pa. Para po siguro, um, umunsad na tayo. And I would also like to take this opportunity to thank N K T I doon sa kanila pong recommendation na from a local and practical. And para po sa ating mga mamamayan, napakaganda po, ma'am, nung inyong, um, uh, recommendation na may puso para po sa lahat ng mga pasyente po natin dito po sa ating bansa. Maraming salamat po, Chair. So, I would like to, um, second the motion of Congressman Mark Go.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Garcia, uh, Congress.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we'll, uh, rule, before the Chair will rule, will rule on the motion, may just ask, uh, we have 82, 82 by 81 provinces?
Eighty-two?
Eighty-one. Eighty-one. Uh, national kidney, ilan oh, 'yung, ano, 'yung dialysis centers out of the 81 provinces? On my understanding, parang, parang lahat ng probinsya mayroon na eh?
Pero doon kami. Per region.
Per region po, sir, meron kami.
Per region, per provinces?
We don't have any per provinces. Per, per region po meron po, sir.
Sige, uh, if I may, uh, based on my experience as a former governor of the province of Sambuaga, Cibugay, uh, we entered into a memorandum of agreement with the supplier. And then, we, we only pay three agents, but the supply, maintenance, and, ano, the machines, the maintenance are borne by the supplier. So, binabayaran namin is the agents. Ang question ngayon, because of the political, uh, atmosphere that's prevailing right now, hindi lahat ng congressman naka-aligned sa governor, hindi lahat ng city mayors naka-aligned sa congressman. So, different, uh, approach ang mangyari. So, that is our dilemma. Because, uh, hindi naman lahat ng mga congressmen are, uh, friendly with the governor or the city mayors. That's why, we're just asking sana, if you can fast-track, uh, kung kami ang mag-ano, magpapasok into a memorandum of agreement, we cannot do that because we don't have the resources and the capacity. It is only the provincial governor or the city mayor that can do that. So, kung pwede sana, uh, we can expedite the, anyway, uh, the scheme that I adopted, pwede naman po din 'yung ma-adapt in the different provinces as well as the cities and, uh, regional hospital. Can I, can I have a word from, ano, especially from D O H and the kidney center, please? Any reaction for that matter?
Dr. Sena?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we support the, the suggestion of Congressman Palma. However, in view of the devolved nature of the, uh, health system, uh, the D O H does not have authority, uh, over the health facilities owned and operated by the provinces and the cities. Uh, we can provide, uh, assistance through our, uh, Centers for Health Development in, uh, helping our local government units forge a partnership or a public partner partnership uh, with, uh, hemodialysis, uh, service providers, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
But, may I, may I, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before Congressman Go? Uh, ang problema kasi, uh, passive 'yung D O H eh. Dapat kayo 'yung frontliner, kayo 'yung mag-initiate. Uh, with all due respect to mga local government units, the, especially the chief executives, sa kanila, kung ano lang darating, then ganon din, uh, because they, probably, health is not their priority. So, dapat kayo 'yung mag-initiate, talk to the governor, talk to the mayors, o mayors, ganito. Kami mag-sponsor ng ganito, kayo na mag, uh, and all other, uh, subsequent, uh, provisions in the memorandum of agreement, probably, uh, dun na 'yung fine-tuning. Pero 'yung gusto ko sana, ang mag-initiate would be the Department of Health. Kasi 'yung Department Health, especially in the Center of Health for the region, walang ginagawa. Except, kung ano lang darating sa inyo, sa inyo, tanuna. Would that be possible, uh, uh, Dr. Sena?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, the D O H through the Health Facilities Enhancement Program, uh, provides, uh, capital outlay support. Uh, for hemodialysis, we provide hemodialysis package, uh, from four to 10 chairs, uh, for the local government units. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Ma, Mr. Chair, again, adopt the, the scheme that I was. Mr. Chair, again, adopt the scheme that I was able to implement, enter into a memorandum of agreement with the supplier. Ang babayaran lang ho, 'yung reagents lang. 'Yung maintenance, lahat nasa supplier. So what's, what's the problem with that? Reagents lang babayaran mo eh, including the maintenance and of course, the training. Yun lang ang importante. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Congressman Asidre?
I know that members would want to pass the measure na ano, but just before that, before we end up consideration of this measure, Mr. Chair, I just want to raise three points now for DOH, for Phil and for kidney, for NKTI to consider. Much of the reason why our members are so concerned about hemodialysis is because we take it from our own experience. Most of us are extending medical assistance program. And even us, I was just checking with the office, in the last two years, there had been a significant increase of assistance extended to hemodialysis cases. In fact, almost a third of our medical assistance goes to dialysis. So has there been any study by DOH made? What are the reasons behind, a comprehensive one, on the increase of renal cases, renal diseases in the Philippines?
Well, good morning. Based on of the Philippine Renal Disease Registry, the leading cause of patients going on to dialysis is number one, diabetes, number two, hypertension, and number three, glomerulonephritis or inflammation of the kidney. So these are lifestyle diseases. As we know, there's an epidemic globally of diabetes. So as long as there are an increasing number of patients who are diabetic and hypertensive, they are the ones who are resulting in these diseases result in patients developing kidney failure and need dialysis. So I believe the Department of Health has programs such as they provide free anti-hypertensive and anti-diabetic or sugar lowering medications at the level of even the barangay. So there are interventions already being done to try and curb that. But of course, it needs more, it needs to be expanded and monitored also.
Maybe, Mr. Chair, would be possible for DOH, for NKTI, even for Phil Health to come up with a more comprehensive study on the matter? And considering also to make suggestions for preventive measures? So especially considering that this is a lifestyle disease? Because understanding the prevalence would probably help us come up with a more comprehensive financing, the healthcare financing scheme like as what Congressman Palma mentioned, even involved in the private sector. Kasi, if this is a lifestyle disease and we're not studying it carefully and we're not presenting a more sustained financing, financing structure, then this would end up like a bottomless pit, Mr. Chair. Considering that if you don't prevent it at the very root, then we keep, as far as we can finance lang, renal therapy and renal treatment. But if we come up with a comprehensive one, then we'll be able to look at how we can prevent it or at least the underlying causes, address the underlying causes so that the cost for, for the hemodialysis would eventually be more within controlled levels, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Asidre.
Mr. Chair, just to answer-
Yes, Congressman Go.
Yeah, you know, in the bill, the one that we approved last Congress, includes a program, proactive program that will address the problem of, you know, this renal, yes, it's more of prevention. Kasi, we are all reactive in all our measures eh. But this one, this bill articulates the fact that we need to prevent the occurrence of kidney disease among our people. And I think the Department of Health and the different hospitals would have the responsibility of ensuring that we come out with promotional programs that will help in the prevention of this disease, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Solon.
Anyway, I'll make, I'll make this quick. I just want to take off from what Governor, sorry Congressman Palma, what Rep France also mentioned earlier and Bob Kimbo. My concern really is on the treatment side because, you know, prevention, lifestyles, lifestyle changes takes some time, no? The treatment, particularly hemodialysis, is my concern. I think the DOH should really take charge of hemodialysis down to the LGU level, no? Kasi there's a lot of, a lot of hoops right now. Like you said, the Mandanas, you have the evolution, you have all these things, no? In the meantime, a lot of the poor constituents of our provinces are not getting the dialysis needs that they need. In other words, I'll give you an example. Tayo, middle class or whatever, pwede tayo magbiyahe ng eighty kilometers to get dialysis four times a week, okay? But in when you're poor, you have to think of pamaleti, you have to, I'm sorry, you have to think of pamasahi, you have to think of all these other things, no? Plus, when you reach a certain level of dialysis, Phil Health will say you're cut off. Is that correct? You can only have a certain amount of dialysis in a certain year. So that does not do any good for the poor patient. No, so we keep talking back and forth, we add a little here, add a little there. But I think the DOH, when it comes to hemodialysis, not peritoneal, not transplants, but the hemodialysis part, I think you should really take hold of this already, no? Because nahihirapan talaga ang mga kababayan natin, especially sa baba. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Congressman Solon. Congressman Ordanyas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning po sa ating lahat. This, before we approve the motion of Congressman Go, meron lang po ang suggestion. You know, I have a pending House Bill, pre-dialysis for all senior citizens. Naunabasa ko po rito sa ating proposal sa substitute bill on section eleven, pre-dialysis treatment to indigent patients. Ang suggestion ko po rito, hindi po pa pwede natin isama 'yung all senior citizens?
Yes, we'll take note of that Congressman during the consolidation, Congressman Ordanyas. Is that all, Congressman Ordanyas?
Baka po pwede kasi meron akong House Bill na pre-dialysis for all senior citizens. Eh, nakita ko pa ba pwedeng, eh, dyan na po natin isama?
We will incorporate that Congressman Ordanyas. And we now call on Kong Vice Chair Chutor.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is for DOH. For 2023, we already ha, we are leveling up our RHU, right? By super health centers na tayo in the LGUs. In the super health centers, I've seen that some, not all, some of it, merong pondo for dialysis. Is that coming from a different fund or is that included in the HFEP? From the DOH?
Dr. Sena?
For the capital outlay ma'am, particularly for the super health centers, some are supported through our HFEP. And also for the equipment for hemodialysis machines, some may be supported through HFEP, but I cannot say categorically that all are funded through HFEP. Some may be funded through the local government funds or maybe through grants from official development partners.
If it is included in the HFEP, may I know in your HFEP 2023, how many are there naka standby or for procurement na HD units? Do we already have a number on that?
We don't have the data now ma'am, but we will submit to the committee on health.
Because I would like to know in relation to that, if those HD units that you have for HFEP, ilan 'yung mabigay sa NCR, Visayas, Mindanao? Kasi pag sa NCR, ang dami na kasi eh. Here in the Visayas and the Mindanao, wala pa nga kaming mga maraming clinics or the hospitals itself giving, having more sets of it. Then tapos, baka maliliit na naman ang maibigay ninyo for Visayas and Mindanao. So, Mr. Chair, maybe we'd like to check on it for the HFEP 2023. Baka andun na naman sa NCR lahat maibigay. Please give also to the Visayas and the Mindanao area. The next, Mr. Chair, is sa Phil Health. Because when I see it, kasi parang mahirap, mahirap kunin 'yung support nyo for the public hospitals. Now, if we are going to shift it into the private, like a PPP, private, public-private partnership with the LGUs, how fast are the Phil, is the Phil Health in your accreditation? And DOH also in your licensing? Baka mag-red tape na naman tayo. If there are many who would like to invest on clinics or centers, can we help fasten up the pace? Can you give us a timeline for that? Para makita natin how fast you can really do? Phil Health first, then DOH?
Representative from Phil Health?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, ma'am, madam Congressman. When it comes to the processes for accreditation, the corporation is indeed, naririnig po namin 'yung pangangailangan para bilisan 'yung proseso, ginagawa po 'yan. But we'd also like to highlight na in the future po, following the UHC law and pag nagkaroon na po na tayo ng mga province-wide and city-wide health systems, magiging contracting na po, mas mabilis po 'yung proseso, as I'll po 'yan pong ina-outline. This is something which the corporation seeks to work on, the processes po within this year po. Thank you po.
How fast is 'yung sinasabi mo na fast-track? Within a year? Within six months?
Ma'am, I will have to go back to our accreditation department to get exact para bang time counts po, if that is what the representation requires po.
And how, kamusta naman 'yung mga payments nyo? Kasi palagi 'yung Phil Health, ah, 'yung problema kasi natin is nagco-close down 'yung iba. Kasi 'yung Phil Health is not paying them. So, may I know, on your part, kamusta naman 'yung mga payments nyo? Sa Phil Health, the counterpart of Phil Health?
Yes, ma'am. We will submit po to the committee updated data on the arrears, if that is what the representation is requesting. But when it comes to the methods po, this is part of some mechanisms like the DPCM, the credit mechanism, which we're already implementing para mas mabilis po 'yung release. Naitindihan po namin talaga na mahirap po 'yung nagiging impact sa health system kapag hindi naaabayat kaagad ng Phil Health. And we're working on it po.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Chair, if I may, 'yung sa Phil Health muna, before we'll have the DOH answer, sa Phil Health din po, ah, paano ba 'yan? Nawala 'yan sa isip ko. I'll go back, kasi nawala. May I hear first for DOH, 'yung sa licensing? Ah, ilang, how many years can we expect or months ba?
Dr. Sena?
Ma'am, as of this time, I don't have the exact timeline, but we have already asked our licensing bureau and we will submit as soon as we get the information. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chair, parang ang daming magsa-submit. Hopefully, when we ask questions, we can directly have the answer. So hopefully, please submit all those that are needed to the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chutor. Honorable Ditchse Pancho?
Good morning po, Mr. Chair. As a lot po naman ang committee meeting natin, the problem is the budget from DBM. So kahit anong committee po. Now, siguro po, I heard from the resource person of NKTI, ma'am. Good morning po. Kanina ma'am, you were asking the Phil Health kung pwedeng i-increase 'yung kanilang coverage for dialysis patients. Sinagot po ba kayo ng ano, ng Phil Health kung pwede po silang magdagdag?
Inaaral pa nila po.
Ano po, ma'am?
They're still reviewing it, ma'am. So we asked them to expand the peritoneal dialysis benefit, increase our hemodialysis benefit, and include outpatient immunosuppression for our kidney transplant patients. So inaaral pa po nila.
Kasi ma'am, while waiting for the construction, nung mga new facilities natin, siguro, we can ask them to increase the coverage, ma'am, para makatulo tayo sa patients. Kasi ma'am, according to DOH, you have facilities in provinces. Kailangan sa provinces, one of the problems, kumisan hindi available 'yung machine nila. So they resort to private hospitals.
Ah, ma'am, and Kong, that's what we were saying, that we want to do peritoneal dialysis first. Because it's easier to do peritoneal dialysis, you don't need any machines. So the issue po of DBM and even DOH on availability of funds, the funds required for peritoneal dialysis is very, very small. In NKTI po, and we probably have one of the biggest hemodialysis centers in NKTI, we have forty-six hemodialysis machines for our chronic hemodialysis patients, functioning po almost twenty-four hours a day. We can only dialyze, we only have about three hundred fifty patients on chronic dialysis, but we have a thousand patients on peritoneal dialysis. So, in hemodialysis po kasi, you are limited by the number of hours the machine will dialyze a patient. The dialysis takes four hours. So in twenty-four hours, you can only do four patients a day per machine. But peritoneal dialysis po is done at home. The patients don't have to go to a dialysis center for their treatment, they do it daily at home. So they can do it anytime, they do it every day. So there is no limit for a hospital on the number of patients on peritoneal dialysis that they can serve. So that's, this is why we are really trying to impart to our legislators and Phil Health believes in this also. That's why initially, they were giving a lot more incentives po to peritoneal dialysis. I understand though that hemodialysis is very important and, but it may take time because of the capital expense that's required. Even po for personnel, for, we have done a study which we have submitted to DOH. For a dialysis facility that has twelve machines, you need twenty people at least to run that unit. You need about eight point four million for personnel cost. But for peritoneal dialysis, it's, you only need six people. So the capital for personnel is very low. So it makes sense po talaga for our country, developing country. As mentioned earlier, we have patients in islands, dialysis, hemodialysis facilities po. They will not set up in areas where there are low, low number of people. That's why they center on the cities. But peritoneal dialysis, the patients will do it at home and then just come to the doctor every month, go to the facility to get their dialysis solutions, which are provided po by Phil Health. So, as we build po our hemodialysis capability, we can already start off with peritoneal dialysis po for more of our provinces po. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? We will now, can we have it, have the answers and, pwede bang iksian na lang 'yung mga, mga-
Mr. Chair, 'yung tatlong approaches na binagit ni doctor from NKTI, nandito po sa bill na magiging substitute bill natin, kasama 'yung peritoneal dialysis, 'yung hemodialysis, kasama 'yung transplantation. And we encourage them. Not only that, as we stated earlier, meron tayong effort to prevent the occurrence of any of these problems, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Magu.
Having said that, I would like to ask this honorable Chair to act on the motion that has been-
I was about to, to comment on the-
I haven't asked my questions yet, Mr. Chair.
So before we act on that, please, with your indulgence, Honorable Mark Go, let us allow Congressman Akop to add, yes, Congressman Akop and then Congressman Plato.
I've been talking about peritoneal and hemodialysis. I'm not a doctor, so I do not know the difference between the two. If you look at the, the Phil Health thrust, it is hemodialysis that they are supporting. And if you look at the DOH, especially the Kidney Institute, they are proposing peritoneal dialysis. Now, may we know the difference between these two? Dahil naguguluhan na po ako dun sa naririnig ko eh.
So, uh, bakit ganon? Merong, merong hindi pagkakaintindihan 'yung Phil Health at saka uh, the Kidney Institute or Department of Health. If you look at the paper submitted by the Kidney Institute, they have wrote letters to uh, the Phil Health uh, since twenty twenty-two. And I think this, these letters have been left unanswered, which would clarify the position of the uh, Kidney Institute. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh, before uh, Doctor Dangilan answers. Um, briefly, um, the, the bills includes three-prong approach to the management of end-stage renal disease. These are the hemodialysis, the peritoneal dialysis, and the transplant surgery. So the N K T I is not proposing a peritoneal dialysis. They are proposing to focus, to include, in fact, to encourage more peritoneal dialysis because it is supposed to be simpler and it does not require machines. And this can be done at home. And yes, I agree, but of course, this entails training. We need trainers, we need uh, members of the family or members of the community who are willing to perform such procedure. Peritoneal dialysis, ang pagkakaiba lang sa pagkaalam ko, uh, Congressman Ako, I'm, I'm E N T, but sa pagkakaalam ko, ang difference ng hemodialysis gagamitin mo ang pag-cleanse ng dugo, pamamagitan ng ugat, at ang, 'yung peritoneal dialysis gagamitin mo 'yung tinatawag na abdominal cavity dito sa may tan. Wala kang gagami, wala kang tataman ugat. Gagamitin mo 'yung space between the intestine and the uh, 'yung tan. 'Yung space na yon, dun ka maglalagay ng tubig at dun iki-clear. 'Yung, 'yung piniproform ng kidney, pe-perform ngayon ang peritoneum, 'yung sa loob ng tan. And this can be done actually sa bahay. In the States, very common ito na ginagawa. But here in the Philippines, uh, I agree na mas simple. But in, in my experience, sa probinsya, hindi pa ganon kahusay at hindi pa ganon ka-encouraging ang mga nag-a-undergo ng peritoneal dialysis sa mga, sa probinsya. Uh, so we need a lot of course budget, we need a lot of manpower, experts, and of course, kailangan 'yung acceptability. Kasi sinuba naman na Lehman ang gustong hahawakan ang tubo na nakadirekta sa loob ng tan. Sameplay, mandiri yon, natatakot yon na mag-handal ng ganon. Of course, also the aseptic, the antiseptic procedures na that goes with it. So, but I agree, the, the bills on comprehensive renal treatment, renal trans, um, uh, renal replacement treat, uh, therapy, either all, this, it, um, kailangan na, kailangan na. This is very urgent, considering the number of uh, patients that we'd have, number five, if I'm not mistaken, killer. And we have about two point three million uh, patients uh, as we speak, that needs um, management either through the three process. So, um, having said that, I um, I think we need to act on the motion. But uh, let us now, uh, let us now, let's uh, give uh?
Congressman Ako, last na po, last na po. Important nila ito, kasi?
And then, and then Doctor Dangilan to answer that uh?
I want to be sure that my Kalian will be happy with the answer.
Mister Chair, may will, thank you, Congressman Ako. Kasi 'yung nasabi kasi na ni uh, Congresswoman Tutor regarding this uh, super health center. Kasi alam po, tasado tayo lahat dun. Uh, pasalamat tayo sa D O H, saka D B M. May binigyan pa kami, binigyan kami sa anggat. Uh, mahirap na ba 'yan sa aking lugar? Kasi po, gusto ko lang malaman na, 'yung twelve million na yon, ten million for the building. Ako, new fight, uh, hindi rin ako doctor, ba tayong ma, uh, engineer? Okay lang, 'yung sa, pag, pag, ang, ang lot, ay government lot, binibigyan tayong lahat. Sana binigyan natin lahat, bang buong Pilipinas, lalo na ang Visayas, Mindanao. Binigyan po kami, tatlo 'yung akala ko nasa akin, dalawa lang, tatlo, isa lang ang nakaratingan po, saka sa G A. At 'yan eh, ang gusto kong tanungin lang po, kasi nakalagay dun two million for the medical equipment, saka ten million for the, isang floor of the building. 'Yung ten million for the building, uh, that's uh, enough, kakasya na po ro, nakita ko na 'yung plano kasi. 'Yung pong gusto kong ma, malaman, kung 'yung mga personnel na hahawak dito, ito ba'y isang manggagaling? Kaya gusto ko rin marinig ang D B M. 'Yung ba maglalagay tayo ng mga bagong doctor, nurse, mga midwife, mga, na, na, empleado, personnel dito, manggagaling sa National Government? Or ididetail lang natin 'yung manggagaling sa National, uh, sa Department of Health? Or sa mga government hospitals? At 'yan eh, 'yung napakalaking tulong po kasi ito eh, uh, ma, para sa information nating mga, may colleagues. Gusto, syempre lahat, gusto magkaroon po nitong super health center. Kasi mga mahihirap nating mga kababayan sa paraplang areas, pwede na 'yung mga, mga, mga senior citizens. Congressman? Ompo, pareho tayong senior, ako super senior. I'm a senior, ako pinapatanda yata dito sa, dito ngayon eh. I'm now going eighty-one years old. Kaya, kailangan, kailangan natin 'yung mga buntis, 'yung mga bata. 'Yung mga, kasi anggat walang hospital dun eh. Kaya po, sana, sana natin ito na lahat ng mga areas dito sa buong Pilipinas, kasi I was under Secretary Public Works, libot ko ito buong Pilipinas eh, when I was in charge of the uh, President's Bridge Program all over the country. Kailangan malibigyan natin ng super health center bawat lugar, bawat bayan sa buong Pilipinas. So, nag-salamat po.
Thank you, uh, Congressman Plato. Um, you know, you may now answer the question of Congressman Ako, uh, Doctor Dangilan?
Um, Kong, before twenty twenty, the benefit that Phil Health was giving was higher for peritoneal dialysis po. It was two hundred seventy thousand pesos per patient per year. And the hemodialysis support at ninety sessions a year was two hundred thirty-four thousand per patient. So mas mataas po sa peritoneal dialysis. But in twenty twenty, tinaas po ng Phil Health, 'yung hemodialysis to one hundred forty-four sessions a year. Kaya tumasa po 'yung assistance natin for H D patients to three hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred pesos per patient. So naging mas mataas na sa Phil Health, sa peritoneal dialysis. Kaya po sumulat po kami sa Phil Health na kung pwede po, i-expand po natin, ipaganda pa po natin ang uh, ating benefit for peritoneal dialysis para tumasa, it's so that it will be higher than hemodialysis to encourage patients to go on peritoneal dialysis. So I think medelay lang ang Phil Health. Uh, we've written to them already, and uh, they said they're already gonna be ready to do more detailed discussions po on how to expand P D compared to Hemo. So I think Phil Health and, and K T I were on the same track naman po. Thank you, sir.
Mister Chair?
Congressman Ako?
Yes. Uh, pasensya na po kayo dahil uh, pag merong unusual sa akin, dun ako nagtatanong eh. Kasi uh, may know the reason why Phil Health increased the support or their annual benefit package for hemodialysis? Baka may rason. Ganon naman sa Phil Health, di ba? Nakangitipo kayo sa akin eh.
Uh, Mister Chair, can I, you know, uh, can attempt to answer the question of my good kababayan?
Honorable?
Yeah, before kasi it's even less than ninety sessions per uh, per uh, year ang binibigay ng Phil Health. Then they increase it to ninety, and there was a time they increase it to more than ninety. Because uh, many of our uh, patients are having dialysis more than two to three times a week. So if it is three times a week, time is fifty-six, that's one hundred sixty-six uh, oh fifty-six uh, fifty-six a, a, a year. And if they're only entitled to ninety sessions, they will be financially handicapped to pay the difference, uh, Mister Chair. So I think that might be one of the reasons. And there were demands from the different uh, uh, groups, uh, like in our city. Uh, there was even a demand that uh, it should be one hundred fifty-six per year. Uh, so I think this is one of the reasons why uh, Phil Health has increased the uh, number of uh, sessions that they will fund uh, for hemodialysis. But I did not realize uh, until uh, our doctor from N K T I mentioned that they've increased the, or the peritoneal support of Phil Health was initially higher than the dialysis, uh, Mister Chair.
Precisely my question, Mister Chair. Because since twenty twelve, the support for kidney transplant has not been changed by Phil Health. And since uh, twenty fourteen, 'yung peritoneal uh, dialysis, hindi pa rin nababago 'yung package na binibigay ng kuwan, ng uh, Phil Health. Pero big lang, 'yung hemodialysis from ninety, from ninety sessions from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, naging hundred forty-four sessions from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. Uh, uh, my wife and my three children are all doctors. And I am, I have been meeting with all the doctor friends of my uh, family. Eh, palagi nila nire-reklamo ito, 'yung uh, bakit nasa sentro lang sa hemodialysis? And there must be a reason behind this, which we do not know. Hindi po ba tama, uh, uh, Phil Health, uh, 'yung Phil Health at saka D O H?
Sir, I feel that tama po si Kong that um, they were trying to make, to, to have hemodialysis procedures um, adequate, to achieve adequate dialysis. Kasi nga po, two to three times a week ang Hemo. So 'yung ninety sessions is really under-dialyze. The patient will have to shed out more to re, to achieve adequate dialysis. So tama naman po yon. The thing is, our fear po is, and this is seen in other countries rin po, if you give adequate three times a week to one hundred fifty-six sessions, nobody will get a kidney transplant, nobody will be, will go on peritoneal dialysis. Why should you, um, why will you get a kidney transplant? When the medicines after the transplant are not covered by Phil Health? I'd rather stay on hemodialysis cause the government will pay for full treatment for the whole year. No man will go on peritoneal dialysis anymore because um, what we are giving for peritoneals is less than what we are giving for Hemo. So because of that, then you will, in, in, in the end po, ang magiging epekto po nun is the patient will say, I'll do na lang Hemo because the government naman will pay for everything for life. So that's why, sir, in our comprehensive R R T bill, sana we give some more priority for kidney transplant by covering the medicines uh, after the transplant, the immunosuppression. And for P D, medyo pagandahin pa po natin so that we are, so that our patients will choose kidney transplant and will choose peritoneal dialysis. And bakit po? Because these two kidney transplant will, will give the highest quality of life and the better survival. And we have shown that in several studies done by D O H, done by N K T I. If you ask patients po on Hemo, on P D, on kidney transplant, who of them has the highest quality of life? It's the number one transplant, number two is peritoneal. This year po, there was a study we did naman po on the caregiver. 'Yung nag-aala, alaga po sa ating mga pasyente, who has more burden in the caregiver? It's the one taking care of a hemodialysis patient. Bakit po? Kasi sasamahan niya 'yung pasyente niya sa hemodialysis center, kakain sila, may transportation. Three times a week, if they live very far, it's a big burden. But P D po, it's done at home. So Hong Kong, Thailand, or P D first? Yun po, thank you po.
Mister Chair?
Sino?
Phil Health po, Mister Chair.
Chair?
Uh, Phil Health, uh, Doctor Domingo?
Thank you, Mister Chair, and uh, thank you to the Honorable Congressman Ako for the question. The reason why the number of dialysis sessions increased from ninety to one hundred forty-four is because of the Universal Healthcare Act mandating the subsidy from P C S O. Yun po ang dating binibigay ng P C S O ng mga sessions, nalipat lang po sa Phil Health. Yun po 'yung dahilan, sir. And we actually support the P D first policy. Tama po 'yung sinabi ni Doctor Dangilan sa N K T I. Nakasalukuyan pong di-develop ang polisiya para mas mauna po ang peritoneal dialysis. Asang ayon po kami sa sinabi ni Congresswoman Kimpo kanina na kailangan tignan namin. Pasensya po, uh, di namin na, na-highlight na, in the course of expanding our benefits, we have to look at the current situation also sa supply side. And that is the reason why we fully support P D first. Binanggit na po ni Doctor Dangilan, hindi ko na hulitin. Nandyan na po 'yung P D at talagang susuportahan po namin. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Chair? Uh, Congressman Plato? Hindi ba nasasagot 'yung tanong ko kasi? Sanga, sanga, para sa atin, lahat po ito eh, para sa atin. Kasi, 'yung, 'yung super health center, the building, pwede namin gawin, we can do that in five months. Pag natapos na 'yung building, kasama na 'yung medical equipment sa kontrata sa bidding eh. Paano, paano 'yung mag-operate 'yung uh, kuwan na yon? Kasi lumagga, magga, I'm asking the personnel to be assigned there. Paki-sagot naman, please, thank you. Uh, D O H?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Ang super health centers po, I considered primary care facilities. So these are owned and operated by the local government units, by our cities and municipalities. While D O H provided support for capital outlay such as infrastructure and equipment, ang pagpapatakbo po nito, kasama ang paghire na mga human resources for health and other personnel should be taken care of by the local government unit. Thank you po.
Do they have funds for this, the local government? Because you, mahalabay, I thought this is national. According to your director there and the other secretaries, they told us before, be, before they give us this, that they will be, we will be employing uh, doctors, nurses uh, from, coming from the National Government. Liwanagin natin ito kasi hindi ko kakampi 'yung mayor ko eh. Hindi, saka kailangan talaga liwanagin nila ito. Yes, Doctor Cascola, uh, last two, last two na siguro, and then we will act on the, the motion?
Sir, currently, we are, uh, we are open to training lahat-lahat ako ng mga nurses natin. Since two thousand twelve, we have already our competency development program for nurses for transplant, hemodialysis, peritoneal dialysis, O R, at saka sa transplant coordinate for, coordinator for disease donor, K T. So, asubnaho, ang dami pong nag-a, uh, nag-aattend. And included po in 'yung folder niyo po, 'yung costing na ginagawa namin po. At the same time, for the past uh, years po, we have trained around uh, hundred per year po yon. And a third po, mga two-thirds po are from the government hospitals naman po.
Kasama kasi 'yung dialysis equipment na dun eh?
Yes, sir.
The estimate.
Training po.
Thank you. Thank you, madam. Okay?
Mister Chair?
So?
Do you want me to repeat my motion again?
So now, we?
Oh, hindi na, hindi na.
May we now uh, act on the motion of uh, uh, Honorable Marco? There was a motion to approve uh, consolidating the, all the bills, the seventeen bills. Uh? Second the motion? And the subject to style amendment, and then was duly seconded?
Using the approved bill during the eighteen Congress as the lead bill and approve the same subject with style.
And if I may add, uh? Okay? Subject to style. Yes, okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, so, there's a motion duly seconded to approve these uh, seventeen bills. Hearing no objection. Uh, the motion is approved. Congratulations to the authors.
Mister Chair?
Good Chair? Mister Chair?
Mister Chair?
Congresswoman Garcia?
Yes, Mister Chair, um, may I also move that all members present in this meeting, if they so wish, with the kind indulgence of all the authors, be co-authors of the said bill?
Second the motion, Mister Chair. Stop there.
So, there's a motion to um, to uh, include all the members of the committee here, present physically and on Zoom to be co-authors, uh, duly seconded. Hearing no objection?
Stop there.
The motion is approved. The motion is approved. Yes, Congressman Ordánias?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, may I, I also move, uh, for the amendment of Section eleven, to include, uh, all senior citizens for pre-dialysis.
That was, uh, already, uh, approved earlier, uh,
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The consolidation and incorporation of your, your, uh, your proposal, Congressman Ordánias.
Mr. Chair? I move that we also approve the committee report and transmit the same to the committee on appropriations.
Uh, there's?
Second.
So there's a motion to approve the committee report, uh, to be submitted to the, the committee on appropriations, so duly seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Conduct the necessary consultations with the agencies.
So now proceed with the, uh, We now proceed with the deliberation on the bills providing for a free annual medical checkup. Um, there are eighteen bills, uh, to be tackled. May we now call on, um, um,
Sir Nataran? Congressman Chudoro, sir Nataran?
Uh, sino bang ano? Uh, win, uh, Honorable Marjorie Chudoro for the sponsorship speech. If he's, she's not around, any member from the committee to sponsor in her behalf?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Congressman Asidre?
I move that we adopt, I move that the, uh, explanatory note of House Bill eighty-five be entered into the record as a sponsorship speech of the said author.
Thank you, uh, Congressman Asidre. Uh, House Bill number one five six by, uh, Honorable, uh, Alphel Basco.
Yes, uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, my idol, Kong Seria Kogato, my dear colleagues and members of this committee. Mr. Chair, it is an honor and privilege to sponsor House Bill number one five six, which I co-authored with Congressman Eddie Bong Plaza. Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill one five six as my sponsorship speech and further consider this brief manifestation as part thereof. This bill seeks to provide a free annual medical checkup for all Filipinos in order to ensure that every Filipino will have free and equitable access to health services. This would not only help Filipinos assess their health and address their most immediate concerns, but it would also ultimately reduce the country's rising healthcare, uh, costs. More so, Mr. Chair, this bill was already approved by the House in the eighteen Congress and was duly transmitted to the Senate. This contains the same provisions as the bill filed and deliberate in the previous Congress. That being said, I honestly appeal for the support of this august body for the approval of the mis, these measures today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Alphel Basco, uh, Honorable Ray Reyes, uh, House Bill number four three zero. He's not around, uh,
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ako?
May, uh, uh, may I make an omnibus motion?
Yes, uh, Honorable Ako?
May, may I move, Mr. Chair, that, uh, all the authors were not present, uh, insofar as the issues, uh, or the bills, uh, were considering, uh, we will consider their, uh, explanatory notes to be their sponsorship, uh, speech in, uh, taking into consideration the importance of time, Mr. Chair.
If there's no objection, the motion of Honorable Ako is not approved. So we now, um, you now call on those who are physically present of authors, uh, on Zoom, uh, Honorable, uh, Senior Vice Chair Gólez. You now have the floor. Honorable Gólez? So if he's not around, uh, that is covered by the motion of Honorable Ako. So we call now on Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández of House Bill number one seven one nine via Zoom. Honorable Hernández? She's not around, so Honorable, uh, Christopher Son Yap of House Bill number two zero three five via Zoom. He's not around.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Yap, you're now recognized.
Uh, good morning, colleagues, uh, good morning, visitors. I am honored, uh, to sponsor House Bill number two zero three five entitled "An Act Providing for a Free Annual Medical Checkup for Filipinos and Appropriating Funds Therefore." The Department of Health, uh, has time and again said that among the leading causes of death are heart diseases, pneumonia, cancers, tuberculosis, diabetes, and other respiratory diseases. These diseases are easily detected via physical examination and diagnostic tests that are part of medical checkup. This bill aims to ensure that each Filipino will get, will get a free medical checkup as members of Phil Health Insurance Corporation or Phil Health. Moreover, this measure, I would complement the universal healthcare law. The immediate passage of this bill is hereby earnestly, so, sangalan sa serbisyon tinooray, dagang salamat, um, may adlaw ka na'tong tanan.
Thank you, Honorable Yap. Uh, Honorable, uh, Rodolfo Ordánias of House Bill two zero nine two, uh, you're now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that my explanatory note be adapted as my sponsorship speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Ordánias, uh, Honorable Franz Promarin of House Bill, uh, two two five four.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I move that my explanatory, um, note be adapted as my sponsorship speech, but, um, I just want to highlight some, uh, salient points additional in my explanatory, uh, message. Um, upon review of the Philip, Phil Health website, there are four categories under the benefit page, namely, inpatient benefits, 'yung pag-confinement, outpatient benefits, procedure with patients are sa- safely sent home with the same day, minor surgery, benefits illness perceived as medically, economically catastrophic, just like 'yung, uh, renal diseases, cancer, and so and so forth, and SDG-related malaria, HIV, AIDS. So there is no mention of preventive medicine, of free annual checkup. Um, with this bill, Mr. Presiding Officer, at least this is a preventive way, um, to cut cost, uh, with regards to the, uh, Phil Health. Alam naman po natin, Mr. Chairman, if we diagnose right away what's wrong with an individual, especially mga blood tests and everything, uh, mababawasan 'yung cost natin. As we all know, ang number one sa ating ngayon is 'yung sa sugar natin. So if we will, if we'll be able to recognize it right away, 'yung pasyente, individuals can go on a specific diet already and maintenance medicine. Hindi na 'yung aabot sa malala, Mr. Chairman. So I move that, um, it be adopted.
Thank you, uh, Congressman, uh, Honorable Promarin, uh, Honorable, uh, Romel Angara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for the time constraints, Mr. Chair. I may move that my explanatory message be adopted as my, uh, sponsorship speech. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, manifest that, uh, in my bill, that, uh, an act providing for free annual medical checkup for Filipinos, the same as, probably the same bill as, uh, or synonymous to the bill of, uh, Kong Franz Promarin, nakainkludin po sa atin 'yung ating preventative. That includes, uh, blood sugar tests and at the same time, 'yung ating cholesterol test. For, para sa ganon, ay hindi na tayo umabot doon sa ating, uh, uh, more serious illness. Uh, so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Angara, um, we now call on, uh, Honorable Eric Go Yap of House Bill number five zero seven four. If, uh, he's not around, uh,
No more, sir. No more, sir.
Okay, so, we now call on the, from the Department of Health, uh, Dr. Melissa Senna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH supports the intent of the bills which seek, uh, to provide annual checkup, uh, for Filipinos. Uh, should the measures be enacted, uh, we will work together with Phil Health, which is part of our, uh, family, uh, to come up with the financing mechanism. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any? Uh, from Phil Health, uh, Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, on the part of Phil Health, in compliance with Section six B of the Universal Healthcare Act requiring the implementation of a comprehensive outpatient benefit, Phil Health started implementing its Consultasyong Sulit at Tama or Consulta Benefit Package by way of circular number twenty twenty dash zero 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 two, which expanded the corporation's existing primary care benefit packages to cover all Filipinos. Every Filipino who, following Section six B or Delta of the UHC Act, registers with, uh, Phil Health Consulta public or private primary care provider of choice becomes entitled to primary care services. This includes medical history and physical examination, case management, preventive health services, and if necessary, referral to specialty and higher levels of care. Mr. Chair, committee members, sa ngayon po, as of January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, alin sunod sa batas ng UHC, umaabot na po sa eleven point two milyong Filipino ang rehistrado sa humigit one thousand five hundred na accredited Phil Health Consulta providers nationwide. Ang bawat isang Filipino ay may sariling pangangailangan para sa kanyang kalusugan na maaaring mag-iba. Depende sa kanyang edad at iba pang mga risk factors. Maaari pong ma-checkup ng walang singil ng isang Phil Health Consulta doctor ang kanyang pasyente. Matapos alamin ang mga risk factors niya, maaari mag-request ang doktor ng walang singil sa pasyente na laboratory tests. Kabilang na ang mga sumusunod. CBC, urinalysis, fecalisis, splutomicroscopy, fecal ocult blood, pap smear, lipid profile o cholesterol, fasting blood sugar, oral glucose tolerance test, ECG, chest x-ray, creatinine, at hemoglobin A one C. Higit pa roon, kung kailangan ay maaari mag-reseta ang doktor ng isa hanggang dalawampot isang uri ng gamot laban sa mikrobio, hika, lagnat, diabetes, mataas na cholesterol, high blood, pagbaras sa mga ugat, at allergies, pati na rin sa fluids at electrolytes. Mr. Chair, last December twenty twenty-two, Phil Health already started the expanding consulta by way of circular twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two. It will soon include even emergency care services following the mandate of UHC. Our initial review of the eighteen House Bills filed seeking to provide free annual medical checkups for Filipinos allowed us to make the following observations and suggestions for the committee's kind consideration. The use of the word "free" should be carefully reconsidered. Indeed, there will be no out-of-pocket expenditure at the point of care, but the health goods and services have costs that are to be paid for by premium contributions of Filipinos, whether by direct payment to Phil Health or indirectly through tax-based subsidies for those who are eligible. A checkup has a number of direct cost components, including, among others, the time and effort of the medical professional to manage cases by way of thorough history and physical examination, laboratory and imaging tests according to identified risk factors, or a clinical impression that needs validation to allow the physician to either rule in or rule out a condition, and a full course of medications or basic office-based therapeutic procedures. It is important to specify which cost components shall not be charged to patients and what their alternate funding source shall be. Studies have found that a thorough history and physical exam can help limit unnecessary laboratory tests. The current Phil Health Consulta benefit follows this rational and scientific approach to providing medical checkups at no cost to patients, where the professionally done history and physical exam will guide what laboratory and diagnostic tests are to be administered. Mr. Chair, Phil Health thus supports and prefers legislative language that will allow flexibility for the corporation to work with the DOH and other scientific and medical experts on the detailed menu of health goods and services such as laboratory tests to be provided. Quoting from a concurring opinion of Senior Associate Justice Leonian in the case of ALFI versus Secretary Karin, quote, "Science relies on innovation. Even if the scientific community conducts repeated scientific testing and continuous research, conflicting studies and research may always arise to challenge each conclusion," end quote. The careful and thorough processes of legislation might be disadvantages to Filipinos if a scientific finding shall arise to challenge the inclusion or exclusion of specific diagnostic or therapeutic procedures already enshrined in the Republic Act. Even at the height of the public health emergency of COVID nineteen, Congress did not mention which specific tests, medicines, and vaccines to use against COVID nineteen. It instead mentioned those categories of interventions and delegated its authority to the DOH and Phil Health to provide for standards of safety and efficacy. Mr. Chair, the readiness and availability of health facilities should be seriously addressed. It is recommended to also include in the final House Bill a mandate for local government units to invest in health and to ensure that there are enough Phil Health accredited health facilities where their constituencies can readily access annual medical checkups. Should the proposed measure be passed into law, implementation will result to increase utilization of health services, which will consequently increase Phil Health benefit payments. We request respectfully that the section on appropriations also include possible additional funding to effectively and efficiently implement the program through Phil Health. The above premises considered, Phil Health is inclined to support certain legislative language closely aligned with or that may even empower in statutory law the continued implementation of Phil Health consulta. We see as optimal language that will not prescribe by statutory law specific laboratory tests like blood sugar or cholesterol. Instead, we respectfully request Congress to delegate to Phil Health the identification of which tests to include based on current and emerging health necessities of Filipinos to be requested or done only after the patient has been physically examined and screened by a Phil Health accredited primary care provider to evaluate the patient based on their individual needs, accord on their health and age risks. Supportado po namin, honorable members of Congress, ang ating mga bills with the following stipulations as mentioned above. Thank you po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Domingo. Just a clarification, uh, did I hear right? Uh, you, you mentioned laboratories that are covered by, uh, by Phil Health?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair.
Meron po. Urinalysis?
Yes po, uh, based on the assessment of the provider, of the physician.
So in other words, CBC, um, stool exam, urinalysis, chest x-ray, cholesterol, among others, these are all covered by Phil Health?
Tama po yon, Mr. Chair.
Or Phil Health members?
Uh, yes po, uh, sa consulta package po.
Under the consulta package?
Opo.
And the consulta package is, um, uh, available? Is this available by all members?
It is, uh, available po, Mr. Chair. Kailangan lang pong mag-register ng ating mga kababayan. Uh, meron pong mechanisms for registration po.
Because right now, the checkup, the consultation is free.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
If the basic laboratories like CBC, urinalysis, ches- chest x-ray are free, also under the Phil Health, so, um, do we need to have a law on this?
Right now, Mr. Chair, uh, under the cover of the Republic Act one one two two three, nagagawa na po namin, Mr. Chair, the UHC Act.
Under the Universal Healthcare Act, uh, okay, um, yes, um, Congresswoman Kimbo?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, that was also, um, my question. So, meron na pong, uh, consulto, consulta package, but ob- obviously, ang problema sa ngayon kasi is ang pagpapatupad nito. So sa ngayon, Dr. Domingo, ilang porsyento na ng ating mga kababayan ang registered na sa consulta, at ilang porsyento din sa ating mga doktor ang registered na rin as a primary care provider dito sa consulta package.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Congresswoman Kimbo, um, roughly ten percent po, uh, because there are eleven point two million registered, uh, Filipinos. And then out of, uh, I, I do not know po the denominator of providers, but there are just one thousand five hundred providers. Uh, we agree po na the implementation really is the concern over what?
Well, yun, yun ang problema, Mr. Chair, one thousand five hundred lamang na primary care, primary care providers ang magbibigay ng itong, uh, free annual checkup. So, sa totoo lang, even if mag-fast break kayo dyan at pilitinin yo ang, let's say, eighty percent ng mga doktor, kulang pa rin eh. Kasi sa aking simple computation, kung mamimik kung mamimigay ng annual checkup sa lahat ng Filipino, talaga magkukulang talaga ang ating primary care providers. So, yun ang isang policy question na dapat tugunan, na sa tingin ko, baka sa labas ng bill na'to. Okay? But my main question, Mr. Chair, for this bill really has to do with the financing. Kasi sa ngayon, lahat ng bills, lahat ng versions, ang naka-indicate ang magbabayad po is PhilHealth. So that's my first question to PhilHealth. Ano po ang estimated budget or cost para mapatupad ang mga bills na'to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Congresswoman Kimbo. At the rate, current rate of capitation, which is 500 pesos per head for public providers and then 750 pesos per head sa private, hindi po ako mabilis pag-math, but that will entail a lot of cost. If you multiply it by each and every Filipino, 110 million times, kahit sa 500 lam po, medyo malaki po yon.
Tama po. So kung binasan niyo 'yung actuarial estimates ninyo na sinamit dito sa Congress, kung naaalala ko, 65 billion. Okay? Do you know how much reserve funds PhilHealth has today?
I do not have the exact number, ma'am. It's over 100 billion.
And do you also know, napaulit-ulit na sinasabi ng actuary ninyo sa amin, na kung hindi binigay ng DBM itong 65 billion sa inyo, mamamatay ang PhilHealth? And that's the perennial debate that we have year in, year out. Bakit? Kasi, tanong ko ulit ah, ang premiums ngayon ba ng PhilHealth, actuarially determined ba yan?
I am not familiar, ma'am, with the specific process.
Well, you're a lawyer. I know that you're a lawyer.
Hindi po, ma'am. I'm not a lawyer.
Should be clear in our H7875, an act establishing PhilHealth, there has to be actuarial studies to determine your premiums. In other words, nakabasa siya sa likelihood of using, sa number, covered, et cetera. May pagbabasihan 'yung premium. So, that being said, kailangan mo ikarga buong-boo 'yung cost ng primary care doon sa premiums. In short, itong 65 billion na sinasabi ng actuary ninyo na kailangan, ay kailangan ninyong ikarga sa premium na sinisingil ninyo sa amin. Ngayon, ang tanong, 'yan ba ay ginagawa niyo ngayon?
Sa ngayon po, hindi po siya nakakarga, ma'am.
Alam natin na 'yung premium na binabayad natin ngayon ay hindi kasama dyan 'yung pangbayad dito sa 65 billion. Kaya nga, 'yan ang lagi ninyong ina-a appeal sa amin taon-taon. Ang problema, ang kailangan ninyong apilahan is DBM, because every year, DBM strikes that down. Okay? So, in short, pag sinasabi ninyo that he fully support kami ang bahala sa financing, ay dahandahan po kayo, because meron niyang implication sa buhay ng PhilHealth. Kaya, for the first time, and I'm very happy, the DOH actually expressed strong commitment na pag-aaralan nila ang financing, because every year, hindi yun na sinasabi ng DOH. So I'm happy na for the first time, sinabi ng DOH, pag-aaralan namin ang financing kasama ng PhilHealth. Because sa aking pagtingin, 'yung pera dapat manggaling sa DBM, ilagay sa DOH, at saka ibabayad ng DOH sa PhilHealth, because PhilHealth can be the implementing arm. Because sa totoo lang, primary care has to be within the purview. In other words, responsibility 'yan ng DOH, primary care yun eh. Ang PhilHealth insurance company lang po kayo, doon kayo sa insurable risks. Pag sinasabing free annual checkup for every single Filipino, Dr. Domingo, anong ibig sabihin non in terms of use rate?
It has to be less than one, Professor Kimbo.
Every annual checkup for every Filipino implies 100% utilization rate?
Agree po.
By that definition, is that insurable? Hindi, di ba? So however, nandyan ang Consulta package, ini-implement yun na, fine, but you implement it not as part of an insurance program, but as part of a primary care program properly owned by the DOH. And you enter into an agreement with the DOH, where it is very clear that the DOH owns that program. Now, why is that important? Sa ngayon, primary care, which is the most important thing, right? We need to prevent rather than cure. That's the most important thing. But that consistently falls through the cracks, because ang interpretation ninyo sa Section 6B, the Universal Healthcare Act, is ah, bahala na PhilHealth dyan sa primary care, kasi claro, individual-based health services 'yan. At claro, sa Section 6B, dapat ang PhilHealth ang magiging primary responsible. But it's not how it is. That's... In all countries, pag dating sa primary care, it's the Department of Health who has stewardship over that. And I'm sure, Albert, that you know that, right? Kaya lang, may ambiguity because of that Section 6B. Ang interpretation ninyo is bahala na ang PhilHealth. But if that's the case, tignan ninyo, 10% pa lang na ating mga kababayan ang pwedeng mag-abill 'yang checkup na 'yan. And I am telling you, it magiging ganyan 'yan for the longest time, because ikamamatayin ang PhilHealth kapag buksan 'yan sa lahat ng Filipino. So, that's the situation. That's the situation today. So unless the two of you talk, DOH and PhilHealth, and you really commit to clearly defining who has prime responsibility over primary care and also who has responsibility over financing as well as implementing, as well as monitoring and evaluating, wala pong mangyayari dito sa primary care. Yun lang po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Kimbo. So, ilinawin ko lang, Dr. Domingo. Sa ngayon, hindi pa libre sa PhilHealth, sa lahat ng PhilHealth members, 'yung CBC, urinalysis, stool exam, x-ray, cholesterol, sugar, among others, hindi pa 'yan libre?
Mr. Chair, libre po siya basta ang member ay nag-register sa Consulta provider po.
Because I just spoke with our provincial health officer. Sa ngayon, wala pa sa aming probinsya.
I think, Mr. Chair...
And the CBC costs 500 pesos sa amin. CBC pa lang yon.
I think, Mr. Chair, what you should ask Dr. Domingo is, doon po sa Batanes, ilan porsyento na ang covered, ang registered sa Consulta? Palagay ko po zero, kaya tuloy, ang nagbabayad po is 'yung mga kadistrito ninyo.
Wait, in other provinces ba? Is it now being implemented?
No, Mr. Chair.
'Yung Consulta package, libre na rin? Ang laboratory, under the PhilHealth Consulta package?
No, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair?
Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tama po si Congresswoman Kimbo, Mr. Chair. It might be either because hindi pa po mataas 'yung registration ng mga members or kulang po ng providers sa inyong probinsya. Looking at the quick numbers from our staff, there are only two registered, sorry, accredited Consulta providers in the province of Batanes. Maaari pong hindi siguro sapat para sa bilang ng populasyon, na dalawa lam po ang naka-accredited na Consulta providers.
Yes, pero doon sa dalawa, wala pa rin ng ano eh. Hindi, sinisingil pa rin sila ng 500 pesos sa CBC pa lang.
Mr. Chair, looking at the numbers before me, they should not be charging po. This might be an implementation issue, kasi they are government providers. Ang allowed lang pong mag-charge, only to a limited extent, ay ang private provider po. We can look into the matter po.
We do not have any private providers in Batanes, all government. Pero, I just talked with our provincial health officer, wala pa. Ang... Wala pang libre under the PhilHealth. So anyway, so it's not yet, ano? Kasi my understanding is, once you are a PhilHealth member or dependent, you can avail of these benefits, of this Consulta package. And therefore, when you need to have a CBC or the laboratories that were mentioned, you can avail of this package from PhilHealth, but apparently, it's not or not yet.
Depende po sa implementation, Mr. Chair. Nandyan po 'yung polisiya. Meron pong mga provinces na okay namang po, pero wirikat po, ganyan po 'yung situation na nangyayari po, and we will look into it in Batanes.
Isn't it in the under universal healthcare, lahat tayo dapat member ng PhilHealth?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
And how many percent, as we speak, ang members ng PhilHealth?
Membership overall, Mr. Chair, I don't have the exact number. It's already above 96, 'yung naa-account po ng ating databases. But if the question po is, 'yung entitled dun sa Consulta, which is the subject of the primary care package, yun po 'yung nabanggit po na na sa 10% pa lam po, kasi 11.2 million pa lang po 'yung nag-register sa Consulta, Mr. Chair.
And talking about membership, if you are not yet a member and you get sick or you see consultation, you can register sa point of service, right?
Tama po yon, Mr. Chair.
So, and then still avail of the same benefits?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So why will I need to pay for PhilHealth? Kung pwede naman pala akong magiging member na lang ako pag nagkasakit ako?
If you are a direct contributor, Mr. Chair, under the current UHC Act, yun po 'yung magkakaroon ng penalty. Magkakaroon, bibigyan po kayo ng servis, hindi po i-withhold ng services, pero mabibill po kayo ng PhilHealth. Para namang po sa indirect contributors, binibilang po sila under the subsidy po na binibigay ng ating national government.
Okay. You said 96%?
At least po. Baka mas mataas pa po 'yung number, Mr. Chair.
I have doubt, I have doubts on that percentage, because I also have my own private, I mean, free medical services. I would say, siguro mga, four out of 10, pag itinatanong mo kung member na sila ng PhilHealth, hindi pa. So, I'm not sure about your 96%, but anyway, moving on. Congressman Angara?
Mr. Chair, to curtail to the topic at hand, pwede bang bigyan tayo ni Dr. Domingo ng listahan ng per district or per probinsya na kung saan ay nagagamit na itong ating Consulta package? In your case, like for example, in Batanes, as stated earlier by Dr. Domingo, may dalawa daw. But in your experience, wala pa pong implementation. So, for the benefit of all the district representatives that are present, para masabi sa constituents, para makapagavail nito, can we, Mr. Chair, can PhilHealth provide us with a list sa buong Pilipinas? Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all.
Mr. Chair, and if I may share, kaya po sa amin sa distrito, meron ng a little bit of increase in registration. It's because I had a joint activity with PhilHealth, at sila naman ay very open. I think you just have to get in touch with them. And you know, within two or three days, nandun na sila lahat, and then nagbrief na kami ng doctors, and then at the same time, nagpa-register po kami ng mga constituents. So I think, well, I had a good experience. I encourage you to do the same.
Thank you. So, before kasi, when you are not a member of PhilHealth and then you get sick, pwede kang magpa-register, but kailangan mo magbayad ng parang one year? Wala na 'yung ganon?
Wala na po, Mr. Chair. Under the UHC Act, hindi po pwedeng mag-withhold ng services. Nabibigay po 'yung medical service. Hinahabol nilang po ng bill afterwards po.
So if you are not a member yet, alam mo naman na pwede ka naman palang member pagka-nagkasakit ka, why will I pay now?
Mr. Chair, yun po talaga 'yung difficulty. Not only here sa bansa natin, but internationally. Kung paano po mapapabayad, ang hindi po masyadong naniniwala sa health insurance.
Thank you, Dr. Domingo. Congressman Pancho?
Mr. Chair, magre-request din po sana kami ng list of accredited service providers in the province of Bulakan. Accredited service providers po nila, 'yung libre consultation po nila in Bulakan, can we have a list?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In response to the Congresswoman and also to Congressman Angara, we will provide po a list as requested by district po. Papagawa po namin, and we will submit it po to the committee then. And as also mentioned by Congresswoman Kimbo, our local offices are more than willing po to coordinate ahead po of that list para matulungan po kayo for the registration activities.
Can we have the report this week, Dr. Domingo?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We will do that.
Mr. Chair, pwede po kami mag-refer? Pwede kayong mag-refer sa PhilHealth, in case may patients na lalapit po sa amin? Can we refer po?
Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the outpatient, pwede namang po. So, ma-a-update po 'yung kanilang tinatawag na MDR, Member Data Record, and so on, para matulungan rin po natin 'yung coverage nila. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you po.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Congressman Pumarin?
Yes, thank you very much. Siguro, what we can do, bigyan na lang lahat ng district ng list kung ilan na credit na sa libre Consulta. Then for sure, 'yung mga ibang colleagues natin, if they find out, they want to know 'yung numbers na rin. So if they can provide all districts na rin.
I agree. Please take note of the request of Congressman Pumarin, Dr. Domingo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yes, Congressman Akop?
Point of clarification only. May I ask the PhilHealth, if there's a need for us to register for the, to avail of the Consulta package, even if we are PhilHealth members? What is the protocol if there is?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Congressman Akop. Yes, there is, the main protocol po is pending assisted registration, in which case the local health insurance office will assist the member. Pwede po yon. Pwede rin pong online. Meron portal po 'yung PhilHealth that allows for online registration. But in our experience, it's mostly through the LEO, the local health insurance office, and also 'yung pong mga providers, they are allowed to assist registration po para sa constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I just... So you mean if, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congressman Solon.
So if I am a PhilHealth member, I still need to do another registration to get that Consulta? Why are we making it hard? I mean, you have all my data. And you're saying everyone gets free lab? So why do I have to double register when you have everything that you need, and I'm a member?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Congressman Solon, for the opportunity to explain the concept of patient navigation. This is actually provided for in Section 6 Delta, 6D of the UHC Act. Every Filipino shall register with a public or private primary care provider of choice. Ang dahilan po nito, Mr. Chair, is 'yung tinatawag na patient navigation. Under primary healthcare or primary care in this situation, ang bawat pasyente ay dapat inaalagaan. Kailangan po siya makilala. So 'yung provider, kapag ni-register name patient under the FPE, na tinatawag namin First Patient Encounter, that's actually the annual physical exam in the first instance. Magkakaroon na po siya ng record, at 'yung pong pinuntahan niyang provider for that year, sa kanya na po mag-aalaga, siya na po 'yung magbabantay sa kalusugan ng pasyente. Kung kailangan niya ng dialysis, marefer siya sa pinakamalapit na dialysis center. Kasi dapat alam ng provider 'yung lugar niya. This is the concept of primary healthcare, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Congressman Pumarin?
I just want to clarify. You mentioned, bago ka magkaroon ng libre consultation, you have to log in online, tama po ba?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes po, Congressman.
Yes, ang isang concern lang, no? I think it's not only in my district, but the whole. Kasi meron man iba dyan, wala namang capacity talagang mag-log in eh, di ba? So hindi nila nakakapagpass checkup. Is there a possibility na parang, halimbawa, they want to have a checkup tomorrow, they can go dun sa accredited, pakikita 'yung PhilHealth card, magpapaschedule na sila? Pwede ba yon?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, Congressman Pumarin. Yon po 'yung tinatawag namin na assisted registration. Nagagawa po yon. Yon po 'yung nakwento ni Congresswoman Kimbo na nagkakaroon ng activities in coordination with PhilHealth sa district level, na automatic rin ni-rегистer po namin 'yung pasyente, at nakikita na rin sila. Nata-checkup na rin in the same instance, para hindi na po pabalik-balik, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congresswoman Garcia?
Yes, I think, based on the experience of Bataan, 'yung difficulty sa implementation ng bill is firstly, kulang po talaga 'yung PhilHealth-accredited providers nationwide. For example, in Bataan, for example, in the municipality of Dinalupihan, ang idea po kasi, lahat ng mamamayan, for PCB, meron siyang pupuntahan na malapit, for example, 'yung RHU. So si RHU dapat po ay accredited ni PhilHealth. At si RHU, 'yung hirap po sa implementation, dapat po lahat, kunyari po may 5,000 households, catchment area ng RHU. Lahat ng 5,000 households, lahat ng miyembro niya, dapat po na-checkup ng doktor, nakarehis... lahat nung miyembro niya, dapat po na-checkup ng doktor, nakarehistro na-checkup ng doktor, para po makapagbigay kung ano 'yung mga pre-diagnostic tests niya. Nagagawa po namin 'yun sa Bataan, um, pero gusto ko pong ishare na mahirap po 'yung implementation, kasi, 'yung doktor, kung 'yun lang po gagawin niya, wala na po siyang ibang magagawa, sa dami po nung pasyente niya, at hindi po lahat nung bayan, marami po 'yung doktor. So again, 'yung number one po talaga is 'yung, uh, Phil Health accredited, primary care providers, dapat po siguro ma-solve natin per province based on population po kasi 'yan. 'Yung, um, kagandahan lang po nito, uh, yun nga, kung gusto ko, kung gusto ko po magpa, magpa-checkup at makakuha po nung free konsulta package, basta meron po akong pupuntahan na accredited, uh, provider, kaya po nila i-register ako. Basta may doktor o meron pong, uh, midwife, pwede po akong i-checkup, pwede po akong resitahan. Si primary care provider, kung wala po siyang X-ray CBC facility, dapat po nakamoa siya, doon po sa mag-proprovide nung mga laboratories na 'yun. Para po si pasyente, pag ni-resitahan, pupunta po siya doon sa, uh, kamoa, para po, uh, ma-cover po siya nitong, um, outpatient konsulta package. So, maganda po 'yung konsepto, 'yung implementation lang po, uh, medyo may kahirapan po sa karamihan po. And, um, katulad po ni Congresswoman, uh, Kimbo, nagpapasalamat din po kami sa Phil Health, kasi pag meron namang po kaming hiling po na, special registration or special activities, uh, with the convergence of efforts ng local government unit, ng DOH, ng, um, um, LGU, uh, nagagawa namang po, pero it's really, hindi pa po siya parang automatic na 'yung, 'yung, 'yung idea po nung batas, kasi parang automatic, kailangan lahat, uh, pwedeng magpa-medical checkup. 'Yung, siguro 'yung implementation lang po, 'yung medyo talagang malaking challenge. Thank you po, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Congresswoman Garcia, are you proposing, uh, provision, additional provision dun sa?
No, I'm, I'm just, uh, shedding light on actual experience, Mr. Chair, sa sinasabi po ng Phil Health, at 'yung difficulties nung ilan po sa ating mga, um, congress. Uh, oh, siguro, um, um, baka si DOH, si Phil Health can, uh, siguro look into the difficulty, kung bakit konte lang 'yung, uh, PCB providers, kung ano 'yung magagawa para mas, uh, madali, or mas, um, maka-access 'yung mga mamamayan po natin, and kung ano 'yung kakulangan, doon po sa mga locality, nung mga, basic services, baka meron pong iba na wala pong, uh, mga basic laboratory, so siguro, um, uh, kasi nandun na po 'yung batas, nand, baka nandun sa IRR, 'yung, 'yung, um, 'yung, uh, difficulty in implementation, or 'yung practicality ng implementation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, may I, uh, may I ask any one of the authors, do we, do we itemize or enumerate the, the list of the laboratories that will be covered, under the free annual medical checkup? He, he specified?
Accredited by Phil Health. At the service providers accredited by Phil Health para magbigay po ng libre consultation?
So ilalagay natin dun, dun sa bill, 'yung, 'yung, 'yung specific laboratory like CBC?
Accredited by?
Accredited by Phil Health.
Mr. Chair, uh, I think the, we see the matrix under the, uh, bill, uh, House Bill Number Five Four Five Four, and by Representative Ernesto M. Junisio, the, the, uh, CBC, urinalysis, uh, et cetera were enumerated there. I think if we consolidate it, uh, I think we can likewise, uh, provide, of course, uh, in deference to the authors if they like.
May I ask, uh, Phil Health, Dr. Domingo, po ma-approve 'yung bill, uh, tapos kasama na ito mga, uh, specific laboratory examination that will be covered, how much, will it cost for the Phil Health?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do not have the figures per test po, uh, but the difficulty po kasi in, uh, including specifically at the level of the Republic Act, 'yung bill, mahihirapan po kami to adjust later on, kung sakaling kungyari, magkaroon po ng mga guidelines na sabihin na, hindi pala kailangan 'yung ganitong test, or may kailangan na additional test, then we will have to go through the revision of the Republic Act. Mas preferred po namin 'yung similar din sa language na ginamit sa HB One Seven One Three, 'yung kay Representative Golles po, na, it's actually providing for the standards, sirabi lang po dun na kailangan magkaroon ng, uh, parang laboratory tests after, a doctor has seen, uh, the, the patient and determine which particular tests are indicated. Um, um, kasi, Mr. Chair, um, alam ko rin po na kayo po'y isang butihing doktor rin po, hindi po ba na mahihirapan tayo na pag naka-required by Republic Act na ibigay ang kungyari, cholesterol test, tsaka, uh, blood sugar test, eh, wala namang pong risk factors for dyslipidemia or for diabetes 'yung pasyente, ang kanyang problema ay ipa. Siya po ay ma- masasubject pa po siya sa unnecessary venipuncture, kukahan pa siya ng dugo, hindi namang pala kailangan, so, we'd rather, uh, magkaroon po ng provision na may flexibility po like HB One Seven One Three, over?
But in, in the consul, under the konsulta pa- package, you, there are already, uh, enumerated, uh, laboratory examination that are covered under the Phil Health, uh, how much does that cost? Assuming that say fifty percent of the population, uh, needs to undergo those laboratories?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will quickly request our staff po, hindi ko lang po masagot this very moment po, but I'll come back to you isap po.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Domingo. Yes, uh, Doctor, uh, Honorable Anggara?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the benefit of, uh, colleagues, sasamantalay ko na habang dito rin si, uh, Congresswoman Stella. Uh, because earlier, uh, Phil Health has said on, on record that, uh, sa konsulta package, there's only ten percent who are registered currently. Uh, what if, uh, let's say ninety percent, or even a hundred percent of the Filipinos are already registered? But as earlier stated by Congresswoman Stella, correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, but, uh, if, if, and then, let's say a hundred percent na Filipino i-registered na, and covered na, uh, isn't that going to be a very heavy burden sa Phil Health? Uh, ayoko namang gamitin 'yung term na, baka mawala ang Phil Health, that's not our goal, but for the record, para at least alam din ang lahat. Let's say, kasi after this, we will get the list of all the, uh, care, uh, providers at the same time, malamang, 'yung lahat ng representatives will, uh, ask for Phil Health's help, para maparegister 'yung kanilang mga constituents, but at the end of the day, kung lahat naman niya ay nakarehistro na, yes, baka hindi namang kaya ni ng Phil Health. So, uh, I don't know if that statement is correct, uh, ma'am Stella and Phil Health and Mr. Chair, para at least malinaman din ang ating mga kababayan, at the same time, our, the lawmakers. Maraming salamat, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Anggara. Uh, Congresswoman Kimbo?
Um, Mr. Chair, before I, I speak, maybe we ask Phil Health, um, kung ano 'yung response niya kay, uh, Anggara? We'd like to know kung ano ba 'yung pagtingin nila dito nga sa magiging impact on fund viability, kasi nung nag, siguro masyado mahabang sinabi ko kanina, hindi na natin napasalita ang Phil Health. Itanong lang po natin, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Phil Health, Dr. Domingo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sabi mo kay Erica, magsasalita ako sa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, dun po sa tanong ni Congressman Anggara, uh, quick numbers po, kung nasa capitation rate na five hundred pesos per hit, tapos sa ninety million Filipinos po 'yung mag-register, that will translate to forty-five billion po, uh, four or five, forty-five billion, um, per year, na cost po, uh, for capitation. So, um, it has to come from somewhere, and, uh, this is where we also share, uh, the apprehension of Congresswoman Kimbo on, uh, fund viability. Uh, yun nga po, hindi naman na sinasabi na automatic magkaka-problema, pero it, it is something that must be discussed, ang ayaw po ka ma-sinabi ni Congresswoman Kimbo, na kailangan talaga may, overall broad map, kung saan nang gagaling 'yung resource, sino ba magbabayad, is it through DOH, uh, to be paid through Phil Health, at yun po talaga ay kailangan mangyari 'yung usapan na 'yun po.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Congresswoman Robes, you're next. Uh, Congresswoman Kimbo, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, um, I would, having heard Phil Health, I would like to propose, um, this is also to address the concern of kung Anggara, baka naman po pwedeng, um, we, of course, subject to the, um, approval of the authors, if we can, um, somehow just, um, kind of cast this bill as an act strengthening the universal healthcare law, um, because, it's clear naman na provided na talaga sa batas itong primary care, um, and, and specify that it is to strengthen the act on the provision of primary care. And number two, um, to make it clear that the DOH has, um, prime responsibility in, uh, program design, um, uh, evaluation, monitoring, et cetera, and, uh, maybe pwede nang sabihin na si Phil Health na mag-implement ng, ng program, but more importantly, doon po sa appropriations, sana dun na lang natin iligay na ang, uh, ang, ang, uh, funds needed, to, uh, properly implement a primary care program that provides annual checkup, um, has to come from the national government. And then, uh, so which means, uh, may internal arrangement na lang, or, uh, kung paano ita-transfer to, to Phil Health. In other words, it's as if kinontrata ni DOH, si Phil Health, to implement the konsulta package. So at least, nakaring fence 'yung insurance program ng Phil Health, and at the same time, 'yung kanilang, um, participation as, uh, implementing partner of this konsulta package, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, uh, Honorable Kimbo. We will ask the authors on the suggestion of, uh, Honorable Kimbo, but before that, let us, uh, allow, uh, recognize Honorable Robes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, uh, good morning, everyone and fellow colleagues. I'd like to direct the question to our resource speaker, Dr. Albert. Um, Dr. Albert, the UHC law actually covers all citizens and automatically entitled to Phil Health benefits, is it correct?
That is correct, uh, ma'am.
Okay, so the konsulta pa- package is part of it, is it correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
All right, with this, is it a universal healthcare, no? Um, how many percent, for example, of the bill, in layman's term? For example, ang kanyang, uh, primary care services, sa'yo nakakuha ng, ng konsultasyon, serbisyo pangkalusugan para sa maka-iwa sa sakit, and refera sa ospital, which covers laboratories, diagnostics, and, and others. For example, ang total package is, uh, five thousand pesos, ilan ang kino-cover si isang tao? Ilan porsyento? Is it a zero balance, or, or lahat libre na sa gobyerno?
So, sorry, ma'am, are, are you referring to sa, sa bawat paggastos po ng Pilipino, ilan porsyento ang binabayaran ng Phil Health? Ganun po ba?
Yes, kung ikaw ay mag-aave ng konsulta, uh, Phil Health konsulta package.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam, uh, Congresswoman, yun pong ating, uh, figures sa Philippine National Health Accounts, uh, hindi ko po nahihimay pa 'yung specific dun sa outpatient, kasi yun po 'yung, covered nung konsulta, pero overall po, kung kasama pati ang inpatient, nasa around, uh, fourteen, one-four to fifteen percent lang po, on average, ang binabayaran ng, uh, Phil Health sa bawat paggastos ng, uh, Pilipino sa healthcare.
So fifteen percent, tama po ba?
Opo, uh, ballpark figure po, kasama na po ang ospital po dun, ang inpatient.
Ah, okay, kasi para alam lang natin, kasi di ba, uh, if you are, if you're gonna raise funds for this, or look for funds for these appropriations, eh, at least alam din ng DOH, tsaka ng, ng Congress, since we really have the, the power of the purse, no, kung dikinan po natin. Uh, pangalawang tanong, 'yung ating, um, digitalization and information dissemination, kasi medyo mahina pa tayo, meron ba kayong, um, arrangement with DICT to come up with more information dissemination in terms of digitalization?
Sorry, sa ngayon po, Madam Chair, uh, wala pang formal arrangement, but it is something that we, we look forward to po, at, definitely kailangan pong kausap namin ang DICT pagdating po sa mga ganitong efforts.
All right, thank you so much. So we really needed an e-governance bill. Pangatlo, um, since we are really working on the grassroots level and the community base, um, do you have us, mabalikan ko po 'yung sinabi ni Congresswoman Garcia, maganda po talaga 'yun. Uh, are you directly involved with the RHU, or the doctors in the community in terms of this project? Kasi ang ganda po ng proyekto.
Thank you, uh, Madam Congresswoman. Uh, as illustrated po by, uh, Congresswoman Garcia, Congresswoman Kimbo, uh, Phil Health can and will always seek to be involved directly with the grassroots po. Ang pinagkaiba po namin sa DOH, although sila po ay aming, of course, mother agency, ang Phil Health po kasi, kahit may devolution, pwede naming kausapin diretso ang LGU when it comes to implementation, kasi nga po financing arm po siya. Yung, of course, ang decision po ay nasa LGU pa rin, nasa Rural Health decision pa rin po, pero yun pong design nung aming benefit packages, kung paano pinipili 'yung mga laboratory, tas kung ano mga gamot 'yung pinipili, malaki po 'yung contribution kapag nag-uusap po kami with the grassroots po.
All right, so thank you so much, nila mo po, dahil ang, ang katumbas po ng serbisyo ito ay katumbas na mapaingat, mapaangat po natin ng kalusugan ng bawat mamamayan Pilipino. That's all, Your Honor, and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to, of course, and being recognized. Marami salamat po, good morning.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Rita Robes. Uh, just to clarify, Dr. Domingo, under the konsulta package, outpatient lang 'yun?
Yes, Mr. Chair, consult is for outpatient.
In the konsulta package, one hundred percent ang iko-cover ng Phil Health, so walang dapat babayaran ang pasyente?
Pag public provider po, Mr. Chair, uh, wala po siyang dapat bayaran na out of pocket, kapag private provider, meron pong allowance for maximum of five hundred, uh, ano po, uh, out of pocket.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. Domingo. Anymore?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Congresswoman Garcia?
I think Congresswoman Kimbo suggested a, um, uh,
Retitling?
A revised titling or packaging of the, uh, bill, so I think, uh, we are, uh, as, waiting for the authors to, to, um, agree or, uh, to give their, um, other comments, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Honorable Anggara?
Mr. Chair? Uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with that being said, since the, for the discussion, I'm totally, uh, uh, in favor of that, uh, what is the suggestion of, uh, Congresswoman Stella Kimbo on my, on my bill? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, this representation also is amenable for the suggestion of Congresswoman Stella Kimbo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Pumarin?
Mr. Chairman, can I, um, request again the Honorable Kimbo to, uh, um, make her motion and to, uh, tell us again the, uh, provision or the title that she wants us to amend?
Yes, um, of course, it's subject to style, Mr. Chair, but my proposal is, um, to call it, uh, an act strengthening the universal healthcare act, on the specific provisions pertaining to primary care, um, and number two on Section Five, which is on appropriations, to, um, instead of saying that the implementation shall be charged against Phil Health, but rather for, um, uh, the,
You wish.
Required appropriation to be provided for the implementation of the act, right? In which case, uh, wala nang dahilan ang DBM para hindi ma-approve ang hinihingi taon-taon ng Phil Health para sa konsulta package. Um, so that's the, the main reason for that, and number three, to include, um, a provision, um, a section that will clearly, indicate that DOH will have prime responsibility over, um, primary care with respect to, um, design, uh, program design as well as monitoring and evaluation. Um, again, mukha naman kasing, tinatanggap naman ng Phil Health na, na pwede nilang ma-implementa ang, uh, konsulta package. Um, of course, uh, siguro maganda, tanungin po, Mr. Chair, si DOH, if, uh, this is something that, uh, they would agree to, or they would wish to revise that further?
Uh, Honorable Pumarin first?
Yes, um, I think, um, we need to, um, ask also all the proponents, as, as you can see, there are eighteen similar House bills, so, uh, even if we all say yes to this particular amendments, we still need to consult the other, uh, proponents. Yeah, subject to style, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, may we hear from the, the DOH, uh, Dr. Asena?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we agree with the suggestion of Congresswoman Kimbo. Uh, the DOH, uh, is always in coordination with Phil Health in the design of public health programs, and also in financing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Asena. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, can we just, uh, move for the approval? The approval of all of this, uh, consolidated House bills by principle, para maconsolidate na din, so we have time also to, to check with the other authors.
So there's a motion to consolidate all the seventeen bills, or eighteen bills, uh, approving principle, subject to style amendment, and amendment, uh, duly seconded? Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Congratulations.
Mister Chair, can we also... Can I move that all members, both present and in Zoom, be made as co-authors? Thank you.
There's a duly seconded motion that all those present here physically and on Zoom be included as co-authors.
Second the motion.
Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We now proceed to the third agenda. The House Bill Number 6772, an act granting the President of the Philippines the power to suspend and adjust the period of implementation of the scheduled increase of premium rates for direct contributors of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 11223, otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act, by Representative and Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, Manuel Jose Manix Delipe, Ferdinand Alexander Marcos, Yedemarie Romualdes, and Congressman Judas Sidre.
Mister Chair and honorable members of this committee, I am pleased to sponsor today, together with the other principal authors, Speaker Romualdes, Congressman Delipe, Congressman Marcos, Congresswoman Romualdes, and this representation, House Bill 6772, which grants the President of the Philippines the power to suspend and adjust the period of implementation of the scheduled increase of premium rates for direct contributors to the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, amending for this purpose Republic Act Number 11223 or the Universal Healthcare Act. This measure empowers the President of the country to suspend and adjust the period of implementing the increase in premium contributions aligned with the government's data and sound economic policies, particularly during national emergencies or calamities or when public interest so requires. Mister Speaker, it is imperative that we ensure that Phil Health lives to its mandate in providing financial risk protection to all Filipinos. In our efforts towards better health, better universal healthcare, particularly especially in the midst of rebuilding our economy, battered by the pandemic, it is imperative that our social safety nets like Phil Health do not strain its beneficiaries into paying more than they can already afford, lest we kill the goose that lays the golden egg, so to speak. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation for being a steady pillar in our country in achieving better access to healthcare as it celebrated its anniversary yesterday. Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asidre. Before we ask the resource person, we'd like to acknowledge the present on Zoom of Honorable Mercedes Alvarez, Honorable Baby Alain Vargas Alfonso, Honorable Midi Kuwa, and Honorable Vice Chair Maria Lucille Nava. From Phil Health, Dr. Domingo. Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Marami salamat po for... Actually, tama po si Congresswoman Galina. Yesterday was the anniversary, twenty-eighth anniversary of Phil Health. Over time, the ability of Phil Health to ensure affordable, acceptable, available, and accessible health services, which is section five of RA 7875, has been impaired due to the lack of revenue for its fund pool as a strategic purchaser. Instead of coming together through their premium contributions adjusted according to income and allowing Phil Health to serve as the means for the healthy to help pay for the care of the sick and for those who can afford medical care to subsidize those who cannot, Filipino families have been left to fend for themselves in the face of the ever-rising risk of financial hardship due to the costs of healthcare. When the UHC Act was legislated in 2019, it enshrined into law a remedy to the above situation. Section 10 of RA 11223, carefully deliberated in Congress, would have been a remedy to the above-mentioned difficulty of fund pooling. The corporation, Phil Health, much like everyone else, never did foresee the COVID-19 pandemic and its devastating financial effects. True to its mandate, Phil Health immediately designed and implemented testing, isolation, and treatment benefits for COVID-19. Phil Health understands the financial difficulties to households brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic. In the short term, deferring increases in premium contributions by way of amending the UHC Act may relieve the pressure on families. In the medium to long term, installing a legal mechanism for the president to suspend increases contingent upon dire circumstances such as what was experienced during the pandemic may cushion the future financial risks. Mister Chair, we must not forget, however, that now more than ever during a health emergency and shortly thereafter, when healthcare is most needed, Filipinos will need a strong strategic purchaser with sufficient fund pool to shield them from financial ruin due to the high costs of care. It is with the above premises, on the need to have a sufficient fund pool to absorb financial risk, that we respectfully submit the following observations for consideration. We agree with removing the penalty on miscontribution subject to the guarantee that there be a mechanism to offset the expenditure for a member who falls ill despite having miscontributions. Perhaps there could be a mechanism for deferred payment of arrears or something to that effect. Within the schedule of premium contributions, why are the income ceilings po being reduced to levels that are even lower than what was been enacted in Republic Act 11223? This could result in an inequitable situation where individuals capable of earning larger amounts do not pay premiums according to their purchasing power, while individuals who earn little end up paying a larger share of their income relative to their better-off counterparts. Mister Chair, migrant workers are almost always required by their receiving countries to pay for health insurance coverage in those countries as they do join the risk pool of the population within that jurisdiction. However, their dependents who remain in the Philippines will have to be covered. And while the bills do propose for the corresponding premiums to be subsidized by the Philippine government, can we get an assurance po from the DBM, well, from the Congress, of course, as the power of the purse, that such amounts would be readily provided given the tight fiscal space we are already in? And finally, why are Filipinos with dual citizenship, in accordance with RA 9225, also proposed to be considered as migrant workers and thus eligible for government subsidy of premium contributions? Mister Chair, could there be a mechanism to determine the impact on their ability to earn, if indeed any, of their acquisition of dual citizenship? Napaka-broad po kasi nun kategori na dual citizen. There are many situations where someone can be a dual citizen depend, and this does not have any relationship to their ability to earn for. About the proposal to empower the Health Technology Assessment Council to review and assess existing DOH and Phil Health benefit packages and recommend appropriate and reasonable amounts per package based on prevailing technologies or treatments, this appears to require capabilities for extrerial science. On the assumption that the H-TAC is able to provide those, to whom shall the H-TAC make its recommendation? We respectfully suggest to specify within the law or the bill, as for example, that the recommendation be made to the Phil Health Board of Directors. We submit that, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Domingo. Mister Chair, Honorable Asidre.
First, Mister Chair, would like to reiterate, in reaction to what the representative, Dr. Domingo, mentioned, first, this is not a departure from the original intent of Republic Act 11223. We would like to reiterate that we are still committed, and I think that especially particularly the proponents of the measure are still committed into the full implementation of universal healthcare. Only that in cognizance of the socioeconomic challenges that we find ourselves in, that we would want to allow the President of the Philippines, be granted the authority to suspend the legislated implementation period timeline that was provided in the said measure. I would like to take note that the... This measure, as filed, no, 6772, also sets limits on the delegated authority to the president by qualifying it that such adjustment can only be made during national emergencies or calamities or when public interest so requires, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asidre. So, there are no other comments?
Mister, Mister Chair.
Meron pa. Briefly, Dr. Domingo.
Mister Chair, it's actually my colleague, Mr. Next Paul Ricotter from the Member Management Group. If we can request Mister Chair for his recognition, po. Phil Health, impo, Mister Chair.
Doctor Ricotter, your brief comment?
I am not a doctor, sir. I am a CPA by profession. May I be allowed to read the position paper prepared by the Core Plan regarding the proposed bill, House Bill Number 6772? May be allowed to read it, sir?
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, sir. The Philippine Phil Health Insurance Corporation recognizes the intentions of the proposed bill in providing breathing space and assuring Filipinos that the government is sensitive to the needs of its countrymen, especially during this difficult time. Phil Health supports the legislative measure granting the President of the Philippines the power to suspend and adjust the period of implementation of the scheduled Phil Health premium increase in the event of the state of national emergency, public health emergency, or national calamity. For this measure, gives Filipinos a relief from any financial burden during a difficult time. However, suspending the Phil Health increase due to public interest should be carefully thought of. Please consider that Phil Health is a social health insurance program that also depends on the premium contributions of its members to sustain its programs. Thus, Phil Health recommends the following wordings. In the event of a state of national emergency or public health emergency or national calamity, or to protect public interest and welfare, the President of the Philippines, upon recommendation of the Phil Health Board, after consultation with stakeholders, may suspend or defer the implementation of the increases in premium rate and income ceiling. The mandated increase shall be implemented upon the lifting of the national emergency or public health emergency or national calamity. All subsequent increases in premium rate and income ceiling shall be implemented in the succeeding years accordingly. This is now being routed and to be signed later on by our acting president and CEO, Emmanuel Arle Di Smad Jr. That's all, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Ricotter, Honorable Asidre.
Mister Chair, the authors have no objection to the manifestation of the representative from Phil Health, save for the wordings, for the proposed wording.
Yes, sir. Yes, Your Honor.
Considering that the limitations on the delegated authority is when there is national emergency, considering the emergency nature of the situation, I don't think it's feasible to have consultations at this point. We are confident that the Phil Health Board, on their own, are capable of making such recommendation without the need for further consultations, Mister Chair. So that's... We would like to make that on record, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Asidre. Any motion?
Mister Chairman.
Honorable Acop.
Since there are no more issues raised by the members of this committee and by the resource persons present, may I move for the approval of House Bill Number 6772, entitled "An Act Granting the President of the Philippines the Power to Suspend and Adjust the Period of Implementation of the Scheduled Increase of Premium Rates for Direct contributors of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 11223", otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act. So move, Mister Chair.
Second the motion.
So there's a motion to approve House Bill Number 6772, duly seconded, hearing no objection. The House Bill 6772 is now approved.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
We now proceed to the bills on the rehabilitation and modernization of the Philippine General Hospital. May we call now Honorable Wilfredo Mark Binverga for House Bill Number 2720. Thank you, thank you. If he's not around, any member who wishes to sponsor in his behalf?
Mister Chair. Mukhang mag-isa na lang ako rito, wala na si Kong Marke. May I respectfully move, Mister Chair, that on behalf of the Honorable Mark Binverga, the author of House Bill Number 2720, we consider his explanatory note as his sponsorship speech. So move, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Acop. For House Bill Number 4547, Honorable Ernesto Junisio Junior is not around, so any member who wishes to sponsor in his behalf?
I moved that the explanatory note of House Bill 4547 be the sponsorship remarks of Representative Ernesto NXM... Ay, hindi pa. Ernesto NXM Junisio Junior.
Thank you, Honorable Pancho. And for House Bill Number 7144, by yours truly, may I move that my explanatory note be adopted as my sponsorship speech? I so move. So may we now hear from the Department of Health, Dr. Melissa Senya.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The DOH supports the intent of House bills, which all commonly seek to ensure responsive, quality, and affordable healthcare and patient-centered services in the Philippine General Hospital. The said facility is licensed and accredited as a Level III Teaching and Training Hospital and is recognized as an apex or end-referral hospital with multiple specialty care, training, and research services. The DOH defers to the leadership and management of the PGH and the UP system. And for further comments on the proposed measures, we also provide the following recommendations. First is to consider the proposed roles of the Secretary of Health stipulated in the bills in accordance with the charter and mandate of the PGH as part of the National University Hospital and the UP system. Second is to include provisions on the increase of the facility's workforce, such as the human resources for health, administrative and support staff, and maintenance and other operating expenses to complement the expansion of capacity and upgrading of capabilities proposed, which shall be aligned with the UPPGH-approved development plan. We submit, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Melissa Senya. From Dr. Gaby Gaspie, the director of the Philippine General Hospital.
Good morning, everyone, Mister Chair. And the honorable members of the House Committee for Health. It is a distinct pleasure to stand before you and thank everyone for the support that the committee is giving to the Philippine General Hospital, sponsored by our dear congressman. The Philippine General Hospital is 116 years old this year and has been going through an extensive modernization and rehabilitation since eight years ago. The current status of the Philippine General Hospital now is already at par with most private hospitals, but there's a long way to go in terms of improving further. It's the ability to serve our less fortunate countrymen who continue to pluck the wards of the Philippine General Hospital. We welcome this modernization and rehabilitation bill, as well as the increase in its bed capacity as more and more of our countrymen are seeking tertiary and advanced healthcare that is now available in the hospital. The proponents recognize the fact that although much work has been done already, there is a further need for support to move forward and go to the next level, of which... of which the Philippine General Hospital wishes to be an international center, at least in the region, that will deliver not only excellent clinical care, but also be a leader in research and training of future doctors. We are in support of this bill and in deep appreciation of it. And we also share the same sentiment on the composition of the Council, the Rehabilitation and Modernization Council, where the ex-official chair is the Secretary of Health, which might not bode well with the independent charter of the UP system. But if it's really necessary to do this, we welcome this as a as a development for PGH, where the plans of PGH should be aligned with the development plans of the whole Department of Health. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for the rest of the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Legaspi. May I have your comment, Director Legaspi, on the bill increasing the number of beds of PGH?
This is a most welcome bill for us. Mr. Chair, the master plan, the 25-year master plan of PGH has just been completed. This is with the aim of increasing its bed capacity to more to 2,200, as implied in the bill. And we are expanding PGH outside of Ermita, and these additional manpower services can be shared with the other PGH units in the system of the health system that eventually the university will create nationally.
Will this mean increasing the number of beds? Will it mean increasing in the number of students, medical students, and residents? Resident trainees?
Yes, Mr. Chair, currently we have 200 medical students per year in the UP College of Medicine, and our projection is to increase this by another 200 when the patient facilities have also increased. Our resident trainees and fellows number around 1,010. And of course, the more patients we need to serve, the more residents and fellows that we need also. So this will all be complementary to the increasing the capacity of PGH to serve and to teach also, Mr. Chair.
This will also mean increase in the number of faculty members and consultants of the Philippine General Hospital?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the increasing bed capacity will also comes with the increased plantilla staffing of the personnel of the Philippine General Hospital, and this will include medical specialists, who will be also faculty members in the plantilla positions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Legaspi. Any other member who wishes to interpolate? Otherwise?
Since there are no more members to interpolate our resource persons, may I move that we approve House Bill Number 2720, 4547, 7144, after Comsec has harmonized the different provisions of the bill. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any? Second, Mr. Chair. So there's a motion to approve the three bills, modernizing the Philippine General Hospital, and Julie seconded, subject to style and amendment. And in this regard, we will separate the two bills from the the bill on increasing the bed capacity, so that there will be two different reports. Because the increase in the number of beds is another category. So, yes, Congressman Dalom.
Further, can I move that, of course, with the indulgence of the authors, that all members present physically and in Zoom be made as co-authors of the bills? The respective bills?
So we'll tackle first the first motion. So hearing no objection, the bills on the modernization and increasing the bed capacity is hereby approved. And there is also a motion by Congressman Dalog and Julie seconded that all members present in this meeting physically and by Zoom be included as co-authors, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So now we go to the last part. The local bills. May we now call on Congresswoman Nograles for her sponsorship speech on House Bill Number 6174.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, Congresswoman Nograles.
Mr. Chair, esteemed colleagues, fellow workers from the government, resource speakers and guests, good afternoon. I would like to manifest on record that my explanatory note be
We can't hear you. Congresswoman Nograles? Congresswoman Nograles?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Garcia.
Due to some technical difficulty, if Congresswoman Nograles can hear us, I would like to move for the adoption of the explanatory note of Congresswoman Nograles, House Bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Garcia. Congresswoman Nograles, if you can hear us, you were cut, we can't hear you, Congresswoman Garcia, the sponsorship speech in your behalf. So may we now hear from the Department of Health on the bill of Congresswoman Nograles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH supports the intent of House Bill 6174, which seeks to ensure the availability of specialty services in Mindanao. However, we express reservation on the bill in establishing a multi-specialty center in consideration of the presence of the Southern Philippines Medical Center in the same city where the proposed hospital is to be established. The SPMC already has the already has a 16 priority specialties, is already a multi-specialty center, and building single or multi-specialty hospitals requires longer time and higher budget compared to upgrading the existing hospitals to have multi-specialty capability. In Section 1 of the bill, a corporate body that operates through the income generated by the hospital and the sustainability of the finances of a hospital with a corporate structure may not always be guaranteed. Universal Healthcare Act, Section 29C, states that specialty hospitals, either multi-specialty or single specialty, are required to operate not less than 70% of their authorized bed capacity as basic or wired accommodation. With the implementation of the UHC Act, at least 70% of the bed of the existing hospital will be offered free to the public. While looking at the current ratio of charity-to-paying beds of the government-owned and controlled corporations hospitals, at the current range to 60/40 or 90/10, and most of the GOCs is concerned that raising the percentage of charity beds to 70 could affect the continuous operation and provision of services as the subsidy only covers the maintenance and other operating expenses. Further, in Section 4 of the bill, which proposes the establishment of satellite extension buildings, the DOH also expresses reservation because establishment of extension or satellite hospitals may deplete the parent hospital, so we recommend for the establishment of standalone facilities. We submit, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Sena. May we hear a reaction or comment from Congresswoman Nograles?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do understand the stance, but given this, and we will be requiring funds for this, kailangan pa rin po ng specialty center talaga, especially in Davao, because most of the patients are already catered in NCR. And with, yung sinabi niyo po ma'am, I'd like to ask if the patients are already being catered to these existing facilities already that we have in Mindanao, especially in Davao City po.
Dr. Sena?
Yes, ma'am. Particularly in Davao City, we have the Southern Philippines Medical Center, which has 16 designated specialty care services. And in other parts of Mindanao, we have the Davao Regional Medical Center. And then and also we have we have nine DOH hospitals in other parts of Mindanao. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Congresswoman Nograles?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. However, these two hospitals, ma'am, do not really specialize. Magkaiba po, no? Pumupunta sila sa Tagom, I believe, and po dun sa Davao City, but wala pa rin talagang counterpart in the Mindanao area for that of the same here in NCR. Sa ating lang, heart, kidney, cancer, children's hospital po, spread out pa rin po siya. Tama po ba yan, doctor? Mr. Chair?
Ah, Dr. Sena?
Ma'am, yung Southern Philippines Medical Center po is our heart center, lung center, kidney center, cancer center, and all the other 16 specialties in Mindanao. And also, yung other DOH hospitals po are also designated as specialty centers based on the burden of disease of their catchment population. But going back to Southern Philippines Medical Center, lahat po nung 16 specialty centers na priority ng DOH ay nasa Southern Philippines Medical Center po in Davao City, where the proposed hospital is also to be established. Thank you po.
Congresswoman Nograles?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I acknowledge this, Mr. Chair. However, given that, well, tagadabo naman po ako, hindi po talaga nakicater ng lahat ng SPMC din po. Etong mga bagay-bagay na sana po ma-adjust and sana po magkaroon ng same services that likewise of here that we have in NCR po. Salamat po, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Since there there are no more members of the committee to interpolate our resource persons, may I respectfully move for the approval of House Bill Number 6174 authored by the Honorable Margarita Nograles? So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair. So there's a motion to approve House Bill Number 6174, Julie seconded. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the committee.
Thank you. We call now Honorable John Tracy Cagas, House Bill Number 6106. If he's not around, any member of the committee?
I moved that the explanatory note of House Bill 6106 be adopted as the sponsorship remarks of Congressman John Tracy F. Cagas.
Thank you very much, Honorable Pancho. Dr. Melissa Sena?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH acknowledges the intent of House Bill 6106, which seeks to establish a 75-bed hospital in the city of Digos, to be known as Digos City District Hospital. Davao del Sur has an estimated bed-to-population ratio of 1:638, based on the 2022 PSA estimate. This is within the ideal bed-to-population ratio of 1:1,000. As of 2022, there are 34 licensed hospital in the province, 32 are private, one under the DOH and one under the local government unit. The only LGU hospital in the province is the Davao del Sur Provincial Hospital. It is a 100-bed Level 2 general hospital located in Digos City. The pre-pandemic bed occupancy rate is 108%, which is beyond the recommended or ideal bed occupancy rate of 85%. And also, there are estimated gaps for Level 2 beds in the province. But based on the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan, there is no gap for Level 1. So we support the establishment of the hospital, provided that it shall be under the supervision and control of the province. In addition, we recommend the upgrading of the services and increasing the bed capacity of the Davao del Sur Provincial Hospital. The DOH will continue to support the province in strengthening its healthcare provider network. But considering that the province is classified as a high-gap and low-capacity province, so the DOH may also provide capital outlay support. The DOH may also provide capital outlay support subject to the Health Facilities Enhancement Program Availability Guidelines. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Sena. There are no other members who wishes to interpolate? May I hear a motion? Yes, Honorable Acop?
Since the Department of Health does not object to the creation of a 75-bed capacity hospital in the city of Digos, province of Davao del Sur, and no member of this committee wishing to interpolate more the the resource person present this afternoon, may respectfully move for the approval of House Bill Number 6106, authored by the Honorable John Tracy Cagas. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's Julie seconded motion to approve House Bill Number 6106. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. So House Bill Number 6106 is now approved. We now call on Representative Gus Honorable Gaston Bunting for his House Bill Number 4869. If he's not around, may we ask any member?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Acop?
For in behalf of the Honorable Gaston Bunting, the chairman of the Committee on Franchises, may respectfully move that his explanatory note, insofar as House Bill Number 4869 is considered, be considered or adapted as the sponsorship speech of the author. Of the author. So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Acop, Dr. Sena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH supports House Bill 4869, which seeks to upgrade the Hospital ng Paranyake from first level to second-level community hospital. However, we now use Level 1, Level 2, or Level 3 in our licensing standards. Paranyake City has an estimated bed-to-population ratio of 1:1,374, based on the 2022 PSA estimate. Hospital ng Paranyake is a 50-bed hospital and is the only licensed public health public health hospital, public hospital in the city. And its bed occupancy rate is 93.95%, which is above the ideal 85% bed occupancy rate. And also, there are estimated gaps for hospital beds in the city of Paranyake. So the DOH interposes no objection to the upgrading of the health facility, and we will continue to support
and we will continue uh to support uh through the strengthening of its healthcare provider network. Also, we recommend that instead uh that the intended upgrade be reflected in its hospital development plan and also be aligned with the local investment plan for health of the city of Parenyake. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So this is a high gap?
Low uh how high gap? But high capacity, sir.
Ah, hi.
High capacity po ang Parenyake.
High capacity and high gap?
Uh, yes, sir.
So high gap, high capacity. Thank you, Dr. Resena. Any member who wishes to make the motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that uh House Bill number four eight six nine, considering that the uh representative from the DOH is uh fully supportive of this uh House Bill. I move for its approval.
So so there's a motion to approve House Bill number four eight six nine, Julie seconded. Uh hearing no objection, the motion is approved. House Bill number four eight six nine is now approved. We now move to the last. Uh House Bill number six two nine six, uh act establishing a barangay in the Valiches proper Quezon City, a health center and a lying-in clinic to be known as the Noveliches Health Center and Lying-In Clinic and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas, uh Honorable Vargas? If he's not around, um
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ako?
May I move that the foreign on behalf of the Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas, the author of House Bill number six two nine six, may I respectfully move that his uh explanatory note be adapted as his sponsorship speech of the bill. So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ako, uh Dr. Resena?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH interposes no objection to the establishment of the Noveliches Health Center and Lying-In Clinic. It is a primary care facility under the direct supervision and control of the city. This is aligned with the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, which directs the LGUs to initiate measures in providing basic health services to its constituents. Thus, we recommend that instead of enacting a republic act, a resolution approved by the local government unit will suffice to establish the proposed health facility. Uh the proposed measure shall help in addressing the health facility gap and shall also strengthen the healthcare provider network for the said city. Further, uh the DOH recommends removing the provision on preparing a hospital development plan in section three of the bill because the proposed facility is a primary care facility and is not within the scope of hospitals. It also has its own standards and requirements to comply with. We submit your honor.
Thank you, Dr. Resena.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Honorable Ako?
Uh, I'm not prolonging your agony, Drora. Pero gusto ko pong malaman, hindi po ba pwedeng isama na ito dun sa super health center ng DOH?
Sir, ang super health center po ay owned and managed by the LGUs din po, sir.
Kaya nga. That that's precisely my next question. Bakit yung yung inyong uh support palagi sa mga establishment na mga hospitals ay palaging may kadagdag na if it will be uh handled by the local government unit?
Sir, it is aligned with the Universal Healthcare Act um na magform po ng healthcare provider networks and also the primary care po kasi yung bedrock of universal healthcare. In in UHC, in the healthcare provider network, the members of the HCPN are the public health facilities owned and operated by the province-wide or the citywide health system. The hospitals under the DOH are outside of the healthcare provider network and shall serve as the apex or end-referral hospital of the network. Magkaiba po yung role ng ng LGU hospital and the DOH hospital. If we take away the hospital from the province and transfer it to the DOH, magiiba po yung role, although same po ang catchment population. However, magiiba yung role because the DOH hospitals uh shall deliver specialty services and the hospitals owned and operated by the LGUs, which are part of the healthcare provider network. This will deliver uh primary care services hang uh primary care facilities po na and then the hospital shall deliver um hospital care. And uh for specialty services, they will refer it to the DOH hospitals, which are the apex or end-referral. Thank you, sir.
May I continue? Did I hear right, Drora? Uh there's no need for a law? Uh all what is needed is a resolution from the local government unit?
Uh, yes, sir. Um because uh the facility shall be uh owned and managed by the by the city. Uh so uh local legislation will suffice.
And insofar as the funds are concerned, would DOH help in the funding of this?
Depends.
No, sir. Uh uh it depends. Yes, sir, you are correct. Uh if the however, um the DOH may provide capital outlay, but considering that Quezon City is a high-capacity city, uh we may be uh constrained to to provide capital outlay support. Uh but we will support um through through other means, especially in uh in contracting and also in if there are grants and other financing mechanisms available, your honor.
Yeah, uh, Drora, kasi eh what you are recommending to us is uh just to go to the local government unit. Pero eh kailangan pa rin ng batas for the capital outlay uh that would be involved insofar as House Bill number six two nine six is concerned.
Pero, sir, magagaling din po ayun sa sa funds po ng Quezon City. Hindi naman po sa national government.
Ganun pala yun?
I think what uh Dr. Resena was saying is that uh in cases where there are, yung tinatawag nila, high gap, a low capacity, uh then the DOH can assist or can can uh provide the support for the establishment of the hospital in the local government unit. So there is a criteria set by the DOH, whether if this hospital is a high gap, low capacity, or I think that's the ano, the criteria, high gap, low?
Yes, sir. Uh apat po based on capacity and gap. High gap, low capacity, high gap, high capacity, and so on. However, sir, I would like to add that um regardless of the enabling law creating the facility, even if it's a local legislation, if the local government unit is uh considered to be uh low-capacity and high gap for health facilities, the DOH will also will still provide capital outlay support. So hindi po limiting yung local legislation uh creating the health facility. The criteria po is on the capacity and the gap of the local government unit. Thank you po.
Mr. Chair? I think uh when uh Representative PM Vargas filed this bill, there is an appropriation portion. I think that is the only purpose of this bill. Para sana uh bigyan ng national government ng pundo para i-establish itong uh uh lying-in clinic, yun po ang uh I think that is the purpose of the bill. It is only for the building, it's not for the operation. Parang ganun po yung, that is my understanding, uh, Mr. Chair. So?
Mr. Mr. Chair? Uh since uh there is no member uh who wish to who wishes to interpolate the our only resource person, uh may I respectfully move for the approval of House of House Bill number six two nine six authored by the Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second, Mr. Chair. So there's a motion to approve House Bill number six two nine six, Julie seconded, hearing no objection. The um motion is approved. So?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ako?
Sir, since there's no more item in the agenda to be considered, uh may I move that we adjourn uh the the meeting of the Committee on Health? So move.
Second.
So there's a motion to adjourn, seconded. Uh the this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, uh members of the committee, especially those who stayed with us till uh one o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you very much, Dr. Resena, Dr. Domingo, and our esteemed Honorable Resource Person. Maraming salamat, uh everyone. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, po.